One of the proclamations. I'll read the public, the First Responders Day since it's going to be on here. Okay, everybody, welcome. I will call this work session of the City Council to order. It is Monday, October 7th, 2025, and the first item of business is to approve the agenda. So would someone like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the October 7th work session of the Westland City Council.
Second.
Yes, we moved to second to approve the agenda for the October 7th work session of the Westland City Council. Any discussion today? See none? So Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councilor Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielastowski?
Yes, thank you. So the agenda is approved and we will move to public comments.
We have no public comment.
Okay, no public comments today yet. I know we have some signed up for specific agenda items a little bit later. Then next item of business is mayor and council reports. Would anybody like to make a report of their advisory group or city business in general? I can start by just saying I enjoyed going to the grand opening of Historic City Hall with several of my colleagues here and staff. And so glad that that building is finally open and enjoyed cutting the ribbon. Councilor Groner?
Yes, I barged into a South Fork Water meeting just to learn what was going on and keep an eye on my fellow councillors. I also, there was a fall into art at the library this weekend and some beautiful paintings by local artists. Encourage people to go. I think it'll be running all month. And Thursday and, or rather Friday and Saturday, I attended the League of City meetings in Portland. League of Oregon City meetings in Portland. Learned a lot, met some interesting people.
Thank you, councillor. And I know that at some point soon, we'll have the Chief Executive Officer of South Fork come to the City Council and give a presentation so that everybody can have some understanding of what we're working on over there. But it's good to see you there also. Councilor Bright, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Planning Commission meeting where they had the hearing on the waterfront, which their recommendations will be discussed today in our work session. Also attended the South Fork Water Board meeting. And the League of Oregon Cities had a couple of really great tours that were exciting and gave me some ideas of the potential on our couple of planning programs that we have going on right now. And also wanted to say that I will be attending the Community Academy with Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue the end of this month.
You're in for an amazing experience, so. As Councilor Bonnington, are you going to the TBF and R Academy as well?
I am. I got my fireman suit fitted yesterday. Those things are very thick and very heavy.
Go ahead, make your report as well. Welcome.
We had the Economic Development Committee meeting at the same time as the Historic City Hall grand opening. And that was a lot more kind of just figuring out the direction it was going to go in. But it's very interesting how enthusiastic and engaged that group has gotten all of a sudden. Like, very, very serious. So I'm thinking good things will be coming from that.
Thank you, councillor. Council President Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, I will slightly correct Councilor Bonnington. You'll learn when you go to the academy, they're not called a fireman suit, it's called turnouts. I learned that.
Got it.
But seriously, yes, I also attended the South Fork Water Board meeting, a Transportation Advisory Board meeting, had a paddle on the Willamette River with Willamette Riverkeeper and Tuolton Riverkeeper, and was also invited to the annual fundraiser for the Tuolton Riverkeeper, where I accidentally bought a stand-up paddleboard. So anybody who wants to go stand-up paddleboarding with me, let me know. And you can show me how to blow it up because it didn't have the pump. And I also attended the League of Oregon Cities meeting and meetings, plural. And that was really interesting, especially the tour of Gresham with the mayor Travis Stovall and all the work they're doing for affordable housing and creating community for their city. And let's see, I think that's about it. Oh, Willamette Locks, and I'm going on a tour of the locks tomorrow. And I also wanted to mention ahead of time that this Sunday, I believe it is, the 12th, is Indigenous Peoples' event at Clackamas Community College. And it's on their website, the 12th from 1 to 4. And I highly recommend, it's very interesting. I've been a couple of years and will be attending myself. So that's about all.
One other thing to report that I've neglected to mention was that Council President Baumgartner and myself and several members of staff took part in a good meeting with some folks from the Grand Ron tribe as well. Wanted to update the council to talk about our waterfront. And I think an action item out of that will be a time to invite tribal council members from Grand Ron to Westland to partake in a discussion and hopefully a tour of their Tamwata Village site on the Oregon City side. So that was a good meeting with John George and Stacia Martin, the Chief of Staff, and Martha Pellegrino. So that was positive. Any other reports from the council? Anything, anybody else missed? Okay, well then we will move on to proclamations. We've got three today. The first is Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation to be read by Council President Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Westland recognizes that the Indigenous Peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas the city recognizes the fact that Westland is built upon the homelands and villages of the Indigenous Peoples of this region and affirms the legal rights of the nine federally recognized tribal nations in this state of Oregon and those seeking to reestablish federal recognition and all Indigenous Peoples everywhere. And whereas the city recognizes the value of many contributions made to our community through Indigenous Peoples' knowledge, labor, spirituality, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that substantially shaped the character of Westland. And whereas the city has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards Indigenous Peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and incoming inequality, exacerbates disproportionate health, education, and social stability. And whereas the city promotes the closing of the equity gap for Indigenous Peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of Indigenous Peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunity, and honoring our nation's Indigenous history and contributions. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the Declaration, on December 16th, 2010. And the Declaration recognizes that Indigenous Peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of inter alia their colonization and dispossession of their lands, territories, and resources. And whereas Article 15 of the Declaration recognizes the right of Indigenous Peoples to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall appropriately be reflected in education and public information, and places an obligation on states to take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the Indigenous Peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination, and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among Indigenous Peoples and all other segments of society. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Westland that Monday, October 13th, 2025, is Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Westland. And we encourage all residents, businesses, organizations, and public institutions to acknowledge, honor, value, and celebrate Indigenous Peoples' historic and current contributions locally and beyond, while also recognizing the ongoing and interconnected struggles of all Indigenous communities locally and beyond, dated this 7th day of October, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And I will read the National First Responders Day proclamation. Whereas first responders dedicate their lives to public service, education, and the protection of life, property, and the environment. And whereas first responders include paramedics, firefighters, police officers, nurses, doctors, public works professionals, military personnel, volunteers, and countless others who are first on the scene in an emergency. And whereas, according to the Department of Homeland Security, 4.6 million career and volunteer first responders support the communities in which they live. And whereas, serving as a day of gratitude, we pay tribute to their endless hours and around-the-clock service provided to their communities. And whereas, the day also pays tribute to fallen first responders. And whereas, often the very people serving our communities, our neighbors, friends, and family members and their families, know the price they pay for their dedication to the job. And whereas, even though they are an integral part of our communities, their sacrifices go beyond the hours they work. They face high stress and the trauma that they see wears on them, both mentally and physically. And whereas, the service, dedication, and commitment of first responders deserves to be recognized and honored. And whereas, in 2017, the United States Congress designated October 28th of each year to be proclaimed as National First Responders Day. And so, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Westland that October 28th, 2025, is National First Responders Day in the city. And we encourage all residents to join in this observance, dated the 7th day of October, 2025. And now I will turn to Councilor Groner, who's going to read the Filipino-American History Month proclamation. And I know we have, I think we have a guest here, Fel. Would you like to speak after Councilor Groner reads? Okay, sounds good. He'll read the proclamation and we'll welcome you up.
Whereas, the city of Westland recognizes October 2025 as the 438th anniversary of the earliest documented Filipino presence in continental United States. And whereas, the city recognizes that Filipino-Americans comprise one of the largest Asian-American ethnic groups in the United States and have an enduring and significant impact on our city, state, and nation in fields such as education, business, healthcare, government, the military, agriculture, and the arts. And whereas, the city acknowledges that Filipino-Americans have enriched the fabric of civic life in our community through their leadership, service, traditions, and cultural values that strengthen and inspire future generations. And whereas, the city recognizes that Filipino-American History Month provides the opportunity to celebrate the positive contributions of Filipino-Americans, promote cross-cultural understanding, and acknowledge the challenges faced and overcome by this community throughout U.S. history. And whereas, the city recognizes it is important for all residents, especially youth, to learn about diverse histories that shape our societies, to draw inspirations from Filipino-American role models, and to build an inclusive future. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of Westland that October 2025 is Philippine America History Month. Thank you. So by my calculation, 438th anniversary places this on 1687. Curious what that event was.
Hi Fel, welcome. Just make sure the green light's on and state your name and city residence and you have up to three minutes if you'd like.
Am I on?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Fel Gonzaga Prilihera, a resident of the City of Westland for 21 years and president of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, Oregon, and Southwest Washington Chapter. Warm greetings to the honorable City of Westland Mayor. I have to pronounce it, he talks to me about it. Rory Bielas.
Bielastowski, you're all the same.
I call you Mayor RB. And the honorable members of the City Councils, good afternoon. October 2025 is the 428, 38th anniversary of the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the shores of west coast of the continental United States. They were the first wave of Filipinos that came aboard the Spanish galleon ship, Nuestra Señora de Esperanza, under the command of Spanish Captain Pedro de Onamuna on October 18, 1587. The month of October was chosen as the Filipino-American History Month because of that historical event. The city and state proclamation of the Filipino-American History Month of October is a manifestation of the Filipino-Americans' contribution in the fields of education, business, government service, agriculture, ministry, medicine, and other sciences, humanities, and the United States Armed Forces. This anniversary is significant. It's a time to study the advancement of Filipino-Americans. A time for celebration, remembrance, reflection, and motivation. And a relevant time to learn, appreciate more about Filipino-Americans and their historic contribution to our city, state, and nation. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me and for the City of Westland and the proclamation of the Filipino-American History Month in October 2025.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
A little bit ahead of schedule, I see Doug Riggs is here, so we can just move right into the Oregon Legislative Update. It's been a busier than expected time out of the session this year for Doug with the special session, so I'm sure you've got a good update for us on everything that's been going on.
Mayor RB and members of the council, good to see you. I note that my first roommate at Lewis and Clark was from the Philippines. And we had a wonderful time that first session. I learned an awful lot about the Philippines in my six months as his roommate. So it was nice to see the gentleman just speak. Have a little presentation here that helps keep me on track. So for the record, I'm Doug Riggs on behalf of all of you and very happy to represent Westland in lead site of activity Salem, working with the lead slater, the government, et cetera. So let's go to the first slide and we can move on to the second slide. Can I change the slides? Oh, there we go. The total control. Okay. There we go, hold it all, it looks like I'm important. I thought I'd share, start and share this slide because we have just come out of what was one of the busiest full legislative sessions for a long time. You can see some of the numbers there. There are over 2,000 House bills, over 1,200 Senate bills, and close to 2,000 amendments proposed. The number is at the very bottom of the screen. I really think paying a picture of, you know, how busy the session was. Where 100,000 pieces of written testimony submitted. And a few of those bills that we saw generated a bulk of those. But, and then, you know, over 17,500 people signed up to testify. And I think that's a good illustration of the fact that people cared. They showed up, much like many of you on the council came down to Salem and met with folks in person. We saw many councils, county commissioners come down. But we also saw a lot of regular people and residents show up. Long lines of hearings for some nights. So that session ended, and one of the things they did not get over the finish line was a transportation package, as you all know. And that crashed and burned in the last couple of days of the session. In fact, we were there until late in the afternoon on a Saturday, waiting for them to be able to get that passed. It did not happen, so they adjourned that Sunday in June. And the governor almost immediately said, guess what, you're going to come back. And so she called a special session. So next slide, Teresa. You know, we haven't had a lot of special sessions recently. We had a, quite a few special sessions back in the downturn in 2003 and 2004 and 2005. In fact, I think we had six. All were centered around cutting the budget. Then we went a few years without having any, and we had one in 2010, again to cut funding from the budget when the economic downturn took place. We've had one or two others just for single issues that passed very quickly in a matter of hours. But this is the first one that we've had, which lasted multiple days. And if you tracked it at all, they had two bills that they wanted to get passed. They had trouble getting a quorum. They finally got a quorum in the House, they were able to pass it by one vote, which I'll go to in a second. But then Senator Chris Gorsick, you know, one of our friends and colleagues, had just undergone surgery and couldn't make it. And so the Senate was delayed almost three weeks. Next slide.
Could you speak closer to your mic, please?
Yep, sounds good. This is Representative Warner Rezki from Clam of the Falls, who I thought, as he was watching the hearing on the rules for the special session, brought in his popcorn. And I think it illustrated, you know, really what happened. A special session that could have taken a few hours took multiple days. And it was, it became quite dramatic. Next slide. So the key issues addressed in the special session was a single issue, and that was transportation. Here are the details of the bill that ended up passing. It was a slightly slimmed-down proposal from the end of session. One of the big victories, and we all worked on it along with the League of Cities, was making sure that whatever money was raised was still distributed in the same manner, the 50, 30, 20 manner that we've been working on for, you know, 40 years. It does increase the gas tax by six cents, increases registration and tiling fees, has, brings EVs into a more level playing field as far as paying a rate that would be representative if they were a gas-using vehicle. And so that'll be quite a change for EV users, they'll be paying more than they have been. One of the things that they changed that I think bothered a lot of people is they do increase money for transit, they increase the payroll tax. It's a very small numerical increase, but it's a large, it doubles it, which sounds like a large number. But when you consider the fact that it's only 0.02, 0.1% to 0.2%, it's still a small overall number. But then they decided to sunset that provision. So that sunsets after two years, so that money for transit will be temporary. And so for many rural areas that rely on this money, even more so than the metro area, that's really going to be difficult for small transit associations. And then, of course, something we've all followed is the tolling authority, which Senator Meek and others, Representative Walters, were able to get removed altogether. So the authority for ODOT to impose tolls on anything except for the Columbia Crossing is now eliminated. And that's quite a victory. So we were very excited about that. Next slide. So here's the vote in the House. Interesting how the votes, we expected pretty much a party-line vote. But in the House, there was one Republican, Representative Cyrus Javady from the coast, who ended up voting yes. And there was one Democrat, Representative Vanessa Hartman from Clackamas County, who ended up voting no. Next slide. But there was, a lot of folks felt like the session wasn't handled well and didn't go smoothly. So next slide. So in the Senate, as I mentioned, there was a delay because of Senator Gorsick's health. Fortunately, Senator Gorsick was able to come back for the vote last Monday. Still recovering from his back surgery. But he was able to be their vote, participate in some of the discussions with his colleagues. I was in the gallery and watched him, and he was able to vote. Again, the bill passed by the narrow majority that it was necessary. 18 votes yes and 11 votes no. So that was very close. But there is some fallout from these votes. So there is a cause and effect. And as a result, Representative Javady voting yes, he got quite a bit of criticism from his party, both in his district and in his caucus. And a week after the vote, he announced that he was changing his party. So now he is re-registered as a Democrat from the coast. And then the next slide. Representative Hartman was frustrated with the process and announced just days after the vote that she is going to leave the House of Representatives and run for county commissioner instead. So there are some, two major changes, two people who were very involved in the process over the last several months. I wanted to point this out because ironically, both parties wanted this to pass for different reasons. The Democrats wanted it passed because they wanted it to pass, and the Republicans wanted it to pass because they have announced that they're going to try to refer it to the ballot. And they believe that it's a political issue that can be used in the campaigns next year. So they are now pursuing a ballot initiative. The way the process works is the governor has 30 days to sign the bill. And the opponents of a ballot referral have 90 days from the date of passage to gather the 78,000 to 80,000 signatures necessary to put it on the ballot. So it's widely expected the governor may wait all 30 days, which shrinks the amount of time that the signature gatherers will have to just 60 days. They have to gather 78,000-plus signatures within that 60-day period of time. And then if they are able to do it, then it would be on the November 2026 ballot. So it would wait over a year, which certainly complicates the effort to make sure that we do not have ODOT cuts and we keep the passes plowed and Highway 6 on the coast from falling into the ravine and Highway 43 maintained, et cetera. So it will be, even given the fact that this has passed, we still have some bumps in the road as far as ODOT funding. So from a legislative standpoint, that was one important step. But fasten your seat belts. It is going to be even, I think, busier than usual in an off-year. We're going into a short-session year this next year, which is a 35-day session. Typically, it's about making small adjustments to budgets or it's about passing policy issues that we had not gotten to in the previous long session. But we had a revenue forecast, and it was down significantly. They're forecasting $845 million less in revenue than they were predicting in May. That's quite a downturn. That is before they calculate any of the potential federal losses. For instance, if federal government reduces the Medicaid reimbursement rate from 90% to 80%, that's a billion dollars. If they cut SNAP funding, that is another several hundred million dollars. If they decide that the maximum hospital provider tax rate can be 3%, which is actually what's in statute versus a 6.5% that we were authorized to charge hospitals a couple of years ago, that's four or five billion dollars in lost revenue for the state. So the governor has already issued some directives to state agencies to begin cutting back on administrative expenses, halting travel, leaving vacant positions open. But of course, that's only a drop in the bucket. So there's an expectation that they will, they're going to have to make some significant changes. And since Medicaid is among the one or two largest expenditures in the state, that will probably be an area that will have to be addressed. And Councilor Bonnington and I have had some text messages back and forth on even the changes that CCOs regionally have made on mental health, behavioral services. So fasten your seatbelts. It's going to be some rough sailing ahead. Next slide. So having said all that, what what's the Westland role? Well, all of you on the council and the staff have been very active and participated in a lot of our outreach efforts. This proof is in the pudding. All the work that you did on tolling paid off. You know, the work that you are discussing on things like housing infrastructure and Highway 43, transportation funding in general, the LOX issues, those are all important issues. And they are all are things that need to continue to be priorities for the state regardless of the budget situation. So continuing to set your priorities, you know, deciding what issues are the most important to you as a council, coordinating with our legislators. We get things done because we have a good relationship with Senator Wagner and Representative Walters. They want to help out. They represent you in Salem, as does the rest of the Clackamas County delegation and and other regional reps. And then something that I like to emphasize and we're a firm believer in is collaboration with our our partners. And so that's the Clackamas County people, the folks in the metro area, League of Oregon Cities, you mentioned. I think the two of you were at the league conference. I wandered around for a whole day, and I didn't didn't see you. There's big, big attendance there. But staying involved and staying engaged, I think, is the most important thing. You know, we, as a city, can provide some valuable insight to state policymakers as to what happens if you reduce services and spending over here versus what happens if you do it over here. You're boots on the ground, and sometimes Salem at a 30,000-foot level needs to hear from the people who are actually running the programs. And last slide. So John and I talked about what I could suggest that we focus on or some tips for success, as I call them. I think we need to be realistic about the budget. I think 2026 may be a period where the state has to step back a little, probably won't fund as many individual projects, housing infrastructure projects or arts projects or recreational projects. There may be a little bit of a pause in in the Legislature and the Ways and Means Committee funding things like that. Try to align our priorities with what is it, what it is that the legislature is focusing on. The last couple of sessions, they really focused on housing and behavioral health. It is unclear what they will focus on. But as as much as we can get lined up and our priorities match theirs, that helps. Obviously, our efforts in the past can guide our requests. I mentioned the importance of working with Rep. Walters and Senator Wagner and our other legislators in this area. And then also recognize that sometimes it takes multiple sessions to get things done. There are lots of requests. They don't all get funded in a session. And and the legislature often says, well, I got 1 through 10. I didn't do 10 through 25. So next time, 10 through 25 becomes 1 through 15. And then if you come in, you know, it might take a couple of sessions to kind of rise to the top. And then the last thing I'll say, and you've heard me say this before, the interim really is the key. This is the opportunity to to get engaged, to educate legislators. They have five to 15 minutes when you go meet with them, as you recall, in their offices in Salem during a session because they're busy. But during the interim, they have more time. And they can spend a half an hour or an hour at a coffee shop or lunch or a tour like the LOX were for tomorrow. So the interim really is an important opportunity to keep those things going. So I think I'll stop there and take any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug, for that presentation. Councilor President, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Doug, for everything you do. I appreciate the presentation. And I like to sit sometimes and think about, well, if I was listening to this meeting, what might I wonder? So could you remind us about the funding, either state or federal, with these proposed changes in funding that might be impacting our waterline funds? If, I mean, not specifics, but generally speaking. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about was any suggestions you might have about the LOX funding that the ask that was then not answered? So because I would like to help advocate for that in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Mayor and members of the council. Great questions. I'm not sure what to expect for 2026. I I believe that they probably will take a pause in funding individual requests. Having said that, the money that we secured in the last let's say, of session is safe. I don't think that they're going to take a step back. The other thing I I argue, and I think legislators understand, is that investing in infrastructure and investing in capital construction is actually investing in more revenue. So if you continue to invest lottery bond dollars into projects, you employ people, you put the trades to work, you buy goods and services from local vendors. All those people and companies pay taxes. That adds to state tax revenue. So I think that reductions in those types of spending actually are counterproductive. You know, you you need to recognize that sometimes you spend it all or you get a buck 25 back. And you put people to work, you keep them off unemployment, and you keep their kids in school, those types of things. So I think those those types of things are important. On the LOX, the way I look at this is that the money that the the trust was able to secure is good for our long-term waterfront development and fits in with the the city goals. But the other good thing is it kind of, it takes that off the table. You know, they are not going to be having another similar request. And so it really clears the deck for the LOX to go back and say, look, we are starting construction. We're taking over, we're taking over the authority of the LOX from the core. Construction begins in 2026. The design and engineering is complete. And and we need to get the second tranche of money so we can sign the contracts, again, put the building trades to work and and buy local goods and services and and get that project underway because we know that construction projects delayed are construction projects that cost more. So the the state will actually save money and generate tax revenue if it lives up to the commitment to make sure that the state finalizes the acquisition of the LOX because it is a statewide asset. It's not a Westland asset. It's a, it's an asset for economic development and recreation and and historical value all the way up and down the Willamette Corridor.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Riggs? I see none. Well, the one, I I'll just make one question slash statement, which is, at one point, I had received some projections about what the increase in the revenue from the transportation package could mean for the city, but they were kind of rough numbers. I think they came from Senate President. I don't know if the League of Cities has compiled any sort of calculation from the formula so we could know kind of what we're, what? Because I know the increase in gas tax and registration fees, 20, 20% of that will go to the, directly to cities for road maintenance. So it'd be good to know what the increase could be for the city if that passes. And what do you think about the 60 days to gather the signatures? That's a lot of signatures to gather.
Yeah, Mayor, on the on the on the first question, I I haven't heard any updated numbers. And I think part of that is that ODOT needs to get back and and do some calculations. And my guess is they're doing that right now. A bigger question is, you know, what? What, so a referral will not likely refer the entire package to the voters. It will likely refer elements of that package. So I think that part of the key may be figuring out, do they refer just the gas tax to the voters for repeal or or affirmation? Do they, or or just the payroll tax? There are, I, my understanding is that the the advocates for referral are are looking into that right now. So it may be that the state could decide to move ahead 100% on the elements that aren't referred. And you'd get a different calculation of what the city of Westland might get based on what might go ahead. They could decide, the state could decide to not start collecting the things that are on the ballot and likely to be referred, which means that would delay any revenue from those items that might come into the city. And I think we'll have to wait and see what the referral that's submitted to the Secretary of State actually requests as far as repeal.
And and is there a general feeling on the viability of this referral process? Like whether it's going to happen with fundraising and things like that?
That depends entirely on who you talk to.
Probably depends on political party.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right. The proponents of the referral are very confident that by using volunteer signature gatherers and by a small amount of money to pay some level of paid signature gatherers, and then quite an extensive effort to mail, mail signature sheets out to people with all their networks and all the bloggers and things that they'll be able to to collect enough signatures. Now, the number of signatures they need is is far more than 78,000 because there's always some percent that is is thrown out. They do a sampling. So I think they are, they're targeting 110, 111,000 signatures just to guarantee that they have 78,000. And so I, but then the, you can be guaranteed that the proponents of the of the package, like SEIU and the governor and and others, will be arguing against people signing. So they'll be.
It'll be interesting to watch, for sure, with impacts to all the budgets going forward. Councilor Bonnington, please.
So first, just thank you for your availability on the Medicaid issue. It's been really frustrating to watch 15,000 Oregonians all of a sudden not have behavioral health established with their providers any longer. But my question is that this effort to reopen measures 5 and 50 and kind of go down that road again to fix what is pretty much a broken system at this point. What is your appraisal of how that will end up going in the next session? And what what exactly did they do in reopening that now?
Yeah, Councilor, thanks for the question. That's a very good question and something that I've been working on for a long time. The League always, League of Oregon Cities always takes the lead, but many of us are at the table and helping. And I will say that I was, I actually was optimistic that the legislature might do something. And by doing something, it would be, they would have to craft something that they would refer to the voters because it's a constitutional provision. So the voters would have to be asked for their their permission. But I think the voters are disappointed in the lack of their local ability to make decisions about what is important to fund in their communities. And this is true, I think, throughout the state. And that's, that's what measure 5 and 50 does. It locks us into a, an artificial restriction and takes away the ability of local voters to make a decision if they want to adjust revenues in their community to meet a specific need. So I I think legislators, for the most part, understood that at a better level, higher level than I've seen in the past. So I, Representative Nathanson, who chairs the House Revenue Committee, seems to really understand that and has pledged to bring that issue back in in 2025 or 2026. So I'm hopeful that that'll be on the agenda. The other tax issue that will be on the agenda is that the transient lodging tax flexibility bill, which, again, just gives local entities, like locally-elected city councils or county commissions, the ability to say, hey, it makes more sense for us to put money into public safety because we have this influx of tourists. Or it makes more sense to put money into having facilities, like bathroom facilities or infrastructure, to be able to handle a large influx of tourists. So those two issues, I I sense more of a willingness of the legislature to actually tackle those than I have in the past.
Do you get the sense that the the changes to the revenue system are are kind of supported on a bipartisan basis? Like, will we see both sides working together on that in some form? Whatever they can actually muster in that sense?
Yeah, Councilor, I I think there is bipartisan interest in making sure that our tax system meets the needs of local communities and recognition that not every community is alike. Like, you know, the the interests of Westland and the interests, interests of, you know, Mopin are probably different in some ways, shapes are remotely, they're both on a river. So maybe you have some river interests in common. But I think, I think both Republicans, Democrats, would probably like to see their locally-elected officials and their local citizens have more authority to make decisions for themselves. And that's really what those two issues get to the heart of.
Thank you. Good questions. Any any other questions from the council or shall we? Okay, well, thank you, Doug, for your service this past legislative session and your presentation today. So with that, we are on to a joint meeting with the Sustainability Advisory Board. But I recognize on the clock, we are a little bit early. And some folks might not be here. I know a couple, a couple of folks from the Sustainability Board just stepped out of the room for a minute. So perhaps we, we, should we recess for a couple of minutes and then start? Okay, we'll do that. We'll just take a quick break for the transition to the joint meeting if that's appropriate, and then we'll start in a couple of minutes here. We're in recess. And we're back on the live stream, okay? Thank you, everybody. Well, now I will have the honor of convening a joint meeting with the Sustainability Advisory Board. We're back in session. And should we just start out with just a round of introductions, just for the record? And so we all make sure we know each other. I'm Roy Belostowski, the mayor. We can just go around the room.
Mary Baumgartner, Council President.
Carol Bright, City Councilor.
Rio Groner, City Councilor.
Kevin Bonnington, City Council.
Dylan Digby, Assistant to the City Manager and Liaison to the SAB.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rob Kugler, resident of Westland, SAB.
Roberto Batrione, also resident of Westland and SAB advisor.
Thank, thank you.
We need to make sure we're all real close to the mic because even when you lean back a little bit, I know.
And just make sure the green light's on there when you talk, I'm sure. Well, we, obviously, earlier this year, we had a council retreat. Our goal was to get every advisory group a work plan so that everybody knew kind of what the council was hoping would be worked on. And then with the Sustainability Advisory Board, we had that nice report from Parametrics come in with some different recommended actions and strategies for the city. And part of the work plan pointed out that we should have a joint meeting to discuss a little bit about that report and also just some of the other big-ticket items that the council and SAB would like to work on together. So I know that I, talking with Rob from the SAB, he mentioned that he had, they had some thoughts on the Parametrics report. So shall I just turn it over to you? Or how would you like this meeting to go?
That's fine. I mean, you pretty much opened it how I was going to, which was that part of their work plan was to talk about this consultant report to get recommendations from the SAB on the ones that we should focus on. There's also in the work plan, which I provided, there were some things outside Parametrics report. And it's kind of, I think this is just an opportunity to see where council wants the SAB to focus in the coming year, based on the SAB's interests, that report, the work plan. There's a, there's a lot going on. There's things outside both those, those projects or both those pieces of paper that have come up in the SAB. So just a good opportunity for, to know where council wants us to focus this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I can summarize part of the report that I think the recommendations from the consultancy from Parametrics and highlight some city operations that I think that'll be important to discuss here. One is develop a policy regarding a purchase of alternative fuel, electric, or hybrid vehicles, including cost-benefit analysis for future purchases. So that will, that will be aligned to a specific topic we've been discussing for several meetings with them. Also, consider sustainable building features and equipment in the design and construction for new public works and parks, operation buildings. And I think that's HEV transformation and other things. Also, transition to LEDs in the city facilities so that will improve the impact of the city in in terms of carbon footprint and how we can also seek additional funding and prioritize opportunities for public building HEV upgrades or solar installations. Evaluate the opportunities to establish ongoing sustainability funding without dismissing the city ability to deliver essential services. So we know we need to find foundations, whatever, but it's been hard to identify those. That's something we need to pursue. And there are other wider strategies that we've been discussing about like EV chargers that are not only public, but maybe commercial because we don't see that a lot, high, like, fast-charging stations. Increase opportunities for community members and business to reduce waste also. That's another topic we've been pursuing with the consultancy and create and distribute a directory with repair services in Westland for people who want to refurbish equipment or appliances. I think that's, in general, the recommendations we can talk more about. I think Rob has. I think Rob has a topic and we can discuss other activities we've been discussing too.
Yes, Mayor, Counselors, one of the belated topics that we, we, we addressed was energy reporting requirements. Kara Saylor of the Green Energy Institute has worked with small cities around Oregon on a variety of these sorts of municipal level activities. When I consulted with her about the possibility of doing something like Berkeley's, Berkeley has just recently adopted a building, it's a, it's a building efficiency standard that essentially you would, every time a, a building, be it a home or a multi, multi-family dwelling or a commercial building, you'd assess the, the greenhouse gas emissions of that house or building and it would get a rating and it would go on, go forward with the, with the, with the sale documents. So it would be an incentive for, for sellers of buildings. After I talked with her though, it was pretty clear that that requires a lot of city resources. We're probably not equipped to do that. And then she asked, do we have an energy reporting requirement? And I said, no, not to my knowledge. And she said, well, that's an easy, not a very glamorous place to start, but it's a very important place to start. And what it really does is it asks buildings, particularly commercial buildings of a certain size, to track their emissions as well as their, as well as their energy efficiency. And it gives, it starts to provide the city with a baseline of information in terms of what actually the city is responsible for, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions on the one hand, as well as on the other hand, movement toward greater, greater energy efficiency. So that is something we're just at the beginning of, of talking about. So we will hope to work on that together this year and come back with, with something more for you if you're interested. That's what we want to hear from you today, I suppose, or at least that's what I want to hear from you today, whether you're interested in that.
Oh, thank you. Couple of details. One is the, the first item on the operations facility to see if we could reword that to commit to, would the council commit to incorporating sustainability design factors instead of just suggest them?
Sorry, could you be a little louder?
Sure. Thanks.
Are you, are you talking about the, the Parametrics report, the first?
Yes.
Recommended? Okay.
For the, for the new Public Works Building. Sorry, I'll use the mic better now.
Oh, that's great.
So I, I can't remember, the original wording was something like support it or?
It says consider.
Consider, and we would like to change consider to commit to. Can we do that? So that's a question. Don't know what that in, I mean, does that mean money?
Well, these are just, these are recommended strategies and we could draft up our, have a document that kind of has our response to the strategies or kind of that the city council adopts, or you all could even provide a recommendation on that, kind of to, to take these from a recommendation and kind of say how we're implementing the, the different, as a response to the Parametrics report. And one of those could be that kind of.
Yeah.
Change. The council president has thought.
Another thing that came up in one of our conversations was concerning the third item, LED lighting upgrades in city facilities. And one of the suggestions that came was to track that via purchase orders. That would be an easy way, perhaps, way to do that. So that was, I don't know, I don't know what that entails. I don't know who's doing those purchase orders, you know? This is just part of our conversation.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Bright, Counselor President Baumgartner, and then Counselor Bright.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to comment that I certainly would agree that commit is stronger than consider, but that's still, sustainable building features is not what I would call clear and objective. So it, I mean, I am, I do also agree that language matters and some words have stronger connotation than others, and I support all of this work. So I would, if we had more money, honestly, as a city, I would definitely be signing us up for all kinds of, of stronger language and more definitive measures. But we, we also have to consider every, every aspect impacts budget. And so I, I do prioritize that though, just to be clear. To Counselor Bright?
Counselor Bright, and then we'll go to Roberto.
I can't be sure, but I would imagine that the city facilities are all, any lighting changes would be moving to LEDs for one, they're more readily available, plus the energy consumption, cost benefit, I think. So I would have to check in with the facilities people, but I would think that that is an ongoing thing, but maybe not everything has been replaced at this point.
Yeah, okay. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. About the objectives, so if we see the report, I think the bullets are very like summarized and vague probably, but if we go through the bullets, the operational implementation plan is very detailed. It helps a lot. I think all encourage us to take a look further and see if, if the commitment can happen after the review as a response from the council and help us to, to move forward to other activities or continue pursuing and help or find other stakeholders to provide more information if needed. Yeah.
Thanks.
Agreed.
Counselor Bright, please.
And for some reason, I was under the impression that the Sustainability Advisory Board had an opportunity to talk with staff or the designers on the, on the Public Works Building. Has that happened?
It feels like a year ago now.
Yeah, I can answer. The, I mean, the operations consultants did come to council and gave an update on the sustainability features of the building and all the SAB members were invited, or I think they might have, a lot of them watched it afterwards. That was, yeah. Just since I'm still talking, I will talk about the first three thing, items have been happening. This consultant, Parametrics, gave us a draft policy for alternative fuel, fuel vehicles. So Public Works is in possession of that and trying to find time to work on it. I think that's the problem with a lot of these items. It's just we're very limited in staffing. Sustainable building features, ops building, that's, that's ongoing, that's happened. The LED lighting upgrades, as Counselor Bright mentioned, is something as lights are dying out, they are being replaced with LEDs. We did kind of talk about the tracking of that. Only having one facilities person, I don't know how much I can ask. I haven't had a chance, chance to ask him, but how he's tracking that, if he's tracking that, there was interest in that information. But yeah, so it's all these staffing, staffing limitations. The HVAC upgrades, Parametrics gave us a few leads on that, just haven't found time to work on that myself, as well as they gave us some leads on sustainability funding and funding mechanisms. It's kind of out there. So there's all these items, kind of, there's been progress in all of them, just want to mention.
Thank you for that. On, on the issue of EV chargers, I'll just say, I have, I took it upon myself last year to talk to some of the local business owners and managed to talk to one of the, from Graymore Development who owns the facility down with Market of Choice and that, that, I think they call it Central Village or Hood, Hood Village, can't remember the exact name. But I haven't been able to talk to ROIC yet, but if that's something that Sustainability Advisory Board is, is interested in and like championing that cause, you know, you could go around to other communities and you see they have a lot of, you know, additional electric vehicle chargers. And here we only have basically four total, the two by City Hall and then the two in Will Ammett. We're working on one at the library, but I do think there's a role for the private sector to, to step up. But I haven't, wasn't able to get all the conversations done slash get some commitments or figure out what we could do as a city to help establish that in the city. So I'm happy to help support that if, if the group would like to take that sort of thing on as a, one of their many goals. Victoria, please.
One of the things we were thinking of doing at our last meeting, it came up to talk to Electrify America because they partner with Walmart and we've got a Walmart.
Yeah.
So I think we could probably get it together to do that.
That would be awesome. I mean, that's exactly the kind of thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
So appreciate that. Thanks for raising that. Counselor Bright, please.
And it would be great to have the fast charging, not the slow charging.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's embarrassing not to have one when Madras does.
So if I could.
Please.
Come back to the sustainability features of the, of the, of the new building. So you are probably already aware of this, but it's, if you're not, it's important to know this. So July 4th, this coming year, the federal, federal support for solar, solar installations expires. You have to have a project underway by July 4th. I think that's important for the city to be aware of because there's a pretty good opportunity. I mean, the, the, the return, the tax advantage of, of using solar. So when we, also when we think about sustainability features, I hope, I hope the, the planners are thinking not only about the upfront costs, but the, the maintenance and operation costs over the long haul. And that would be a good example. Solar installations are going to save the city a lot of money over the, over the long haul. So just to, just to note that again.
So the federal support for that expires on, on the 4th, 4th of July this coming year. So they're not over yet. So those are, those are still available and we should take advantage of them while they're still there. Thank you for that. We will note that for the project team. Counselor President Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you happen to know, no problem if you don't, what qualifies as underway, a project underway? Did they specify that?
My understanding is that if it's, if you have started, if you've, in other words, if you started that part of the project, so let's suppose you've broken ground for the building, but you haven't started the installation of the solar panels, that's, that's not going to be good enough. But if you started the project of putting the solar panels in or installing the, the electrical, but I think you'd really want to get into the weeds with the federal legislation at this point, but it's there.
Yes.
That's the language.
I heard about that too, and I thought the very same thing.
Yeah, 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 I've been aware of this, right?
And could you, could you bring up one more time and summarize that issue you brought up earlier about the energy reporting requirements? Is, is that the dashboard kind of thing that, that Michael Carlson's talked about in the past?
Yeah, it, it's, it's similar. So the city of Portland has a much more extensive one. The model for Westland might be Milwaukee, they've been doing it for a while. So what they're, and it is, it's a dashboard. It basically helps the city begin to collect the data that, that positions it. And the reason that might be important down the line is if we ever get an administration in Washington that returns to these sorts of funding, that kind of data will be important to, to make appeal for, appeals for funding. So starting to build that data. So similarly, you know, recording, you don't have to be precise, but knowing that we have achieved 67% LED replacement, that's, that's just a data point that's important for people who, who might provide funding down the line.
Thank you. I certainly support that subject to the staffing capacity to collect the data and maybe we can just have a rough start somehow on that. But so I guess for the city council and SAB is the question, kind of checking on the Parametrics report and just looking for kind of a nod about continuing on with the, the implementation of these strategies? Is that, is that kind of the, are you looking for a specific direction to pursue a particular strategy? Or, I mean, I think all these are noble and good.
Anything, any prioritization council's entrusted in related to that or related to maybe the items in the work plan. Gas powered equipment is something that comes up a lot. It's been talked about by the SAB a little bit, it's kind of been put on the back burner. I know that gets community discussion at points. Yeah, just kind of, if there's any kind of prioritization, I think might help the group, like these are council's top three or something along those lines.
Any, any thoughts from council? Hard, hard to do that on the fly, but we can definitely provide some verbal, verbal comments as to our preferences and then always revisit the topic. Counselor Bright, please.
The council will be getting together tomorrow, looking at some priorities that are closely tied with funding. And so maybe when we're having our discussions tomorrow, we can keep this Sustainability Advisory Board recommendations and this report in mind as we are determining how we're going to fund things and what we're going to prioritize to fund.
Agreed. And I definitely think the themes of staff resources and availability is one that we're going to talk about tomorrow because like Dylan mentioned, one, one facilities person for the entire city and one, you know, how much of your time spent on sustainability, Dylan? Probably 0.25 or something. So, you know, we, we can, we can talk about this in our prioritization for potential staffing. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just actually, I'll say this first. I had occasion last week to have track me, to, to visit with the finance director from Tigerd and asked about sustainability advisor. They just hired a fully dedicated sustainability advisor. Well, maybe not. In terms of, in terms of off the cuff ideas, when you're talking about funding tomorrow, one easy way for us to get started on moving away from gas powered equipment is to simply adopt a policy of when the, when the city crews replace a gas powered yard, yard instrument, just replace it with an electric one. It's not going to be that much, that much different cost. That would be a really great start. Everyone we take out of here is, is a step toward cleaner air in, in Westland, so.
Thank you for that. We'll just go around, deal around the table with any thoughts you have for the SAB. Counselor Groner.
Yes, I think the issue is how much more expensive a lighter appliance would be. And I think we need to, you know, we might be willing to pay a little more, but not twice as much. Or something down the line.
Yeah, and the impact in saving gasoline and, yeah.
Yeah.
No, darn it.
Counselor Bonnington, please.
Yeah, I, I am pretty passionate about the gas powered issue. The noise issue is an important consideration, but also just how nasty those emissions are. I've always felt that it's, it's going to be best achieved through incentives rather than penalties. I prefer that policy generally for just about everything we do. So I feel like engineering something that can be presented to the public that we can actually help with is probably the key to getting that done. And especially working with the, the small businesses, which I think there's a lot of concern about the expense that small businesses would incur through that. So trying to work with them to figure something out that, that they can get behind is going to be the key to that, but that's a big one to me, very big.
Thank you for that, Counselor. I'll just share my thoughts. Obviously supportive of the different things in the Parametrics report, just from a prioritization perspective. I do hope that the group can maybe have some conversations with some of the private sector groups about bringing more EVs into Westland. I think that's a really cool role and I'm happy to support those however I can individually. As Mayor, if you have meetings scheduled, I'm happy to come. And then the gas powered equipment issue, I think it always comes down to the city itself as an organization and supporting getting electric equipment and things like that, like Counselor Bonnington brought up. But then, you know, when you start talking about private sector, how do we be fair to them as, as companies when they've already bought their equipment, things, you know, can you have a phase in? Is there incentives that you can use to help bring in EV, I mean, electric equipment use for the landscape? Because I do hear about that all the time, that issue. And then I think that the, from the policy, from the recommended strategy number one, I'm glad to hear we're working on the policy for the potential city purchase of electric vehicles or alternative fuel sources and things like that. And so if that comes back for adoption and SAB wants to work on that this year and then the coming, however long that takes, I'm sure that could be a little bit of a process, but happy to entertain that. And then on the data reporting, you know, that's a, I'm happy to see that as well. Just depends on what we can do from a staffing and tracking standpoint. And we'll, we can talk more about sustainability and, and like Counselor Bright said, remember this conversation going into tomorrow when we talk about staffing needs and capacity. So those are my two cents and I'll turn it over to Council President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for all the volunteer hours of the Sustainability Advisory Board and all of you, the time and care you take to spend on these. Board and all of you, the time and care you take to spend on these topics on all of our behalf and for the betterment of the city and for Dylan's work too on all of this. Thank you. I came to council and came into city business doing this kind of work. And so this is all really important to me. I can't even, it's like which of my children is my favorite? I can't really pick. But I will say that being, as a person who grew up in charge of a farm basically as a child, I learned a lot about systems and sustainability. I also learned about economics because part of this has to do with demand. So there's a demand among our community for a certain aesthetic. And that is what is being, that is what is creating the use of devices that then a lot of people don't like, whether it's noise, pollution, whatever element of these devices. But what I don't want to do is punish individual operators of these devices in any way. And also there's an enforcement reality. I think about what is, what is the, where is the point at which we can make the biggest difference? So that's what I'm thinking about a lot in this, with respect to the issue of gas-powered equipment particularly. I also understand that some devices are more efficient. So if I'm a one person, if I'm a one-person operation and I have to do X amount of work in X amount of time and I have a piece of equipment that will do it, I'm going to pick that piece of equipment if it's available. So, and also there's the whole replacement factor. And also kind of with EVs too, I actually currently drive a gas-powered car. I think about buying an EV, but I also think about, well, there's the cost to make that car. What's the carbon footprint of just me driving my old car like I always did when I was, we had a lot of old equipment on the farm. Everything we used, we drove it into the ground, basically. So, you know, I really appreciate the time and I want us all, and I think we are, taking care and time to consider all these really important points that you've brought forward. So I plan on continuing to doing that, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President. Councilor Bright, any feedback or thoughts?
Well, I'll jump to a different thing that was brought up, and that's the directory with repair services. I think that's a great idea. I also want to comment on the repair fairs that happen in Clackamas County. The Robinwood Station usually hosts those. We would actually, they would like to host them more frequently, but the county doesn't want to overwhelm the repairers. But an interesting thing with the repair fairs is they weigh the things that come in that they're able to repair. And they say here, we have been able to keep this much out of the landfill. So I think the repair fairs are a good way to let people get further use out of things that they've already purchased.
Thank you for that. Comments, everybody? Any thoughts from the SAB on what you heard or any closing comments on moving forward?
So, yeah, I want to, like, I want to thank about all this interaction with Dylan and the SAB, all recommendations he has been putting. There's another project we've been discussing about it, is a grant with tree plotter. Megan, Big and Dylan has been, they have been helping to connect the dots there. How we can control pesting trees in the city, public trees and private trees too, but also have an inventory and see what is the impact of deforestation. The Oregon Forest Tree Department, they have a grant for these kind of tools. And we just take the information coming from all the inventories that we have multiple years ago and hopefully that program can be running eventually and maybe involve also high school students. But that's a topic that it wasn't in my, in my list here, but I remember we've been discussing this more.
Thank you for that. So are we going out for that grant as a city? Is that what you?
Yeah, well, the grant is the tool itself. So, yeah, so I think the program is very sustainable. We don't need funding. We just need a lot of hands and probably high school teachers with students helping and maybe parks and recreation also a lot of help from, on the information we're getting. Yep.
Awesome. Well, Dylan, and do you all feel like you have a good sense of how to move forward out of the joint meeting and some good feedback from the city council?
Yes, yeah, appreciate, I actually appreciate your listing some of the priorities you have. That's really helpful, so thank you and thanks for your time.
And I can't echo Council President Baumgartner's comments better. We're very grateful for all your work on sustainability matters and I think we've seen some real results over the last few years from working with you all. And thanks to Dylan as well for serving as the, our sustainability staff person. In addition to the other five to 10 jobs that you have with the city under that vague title of assistant to the city manager. We appreciate it. So with that, we will conclude this joint meeting and look forward to continued conversation and collaboration going forward. Thanks. And congratulations to Michael Carlson on the baby and Greg Smith, if you're listening, we miss you, but enjoy France. So I'm sure he'll watch the tape of this meeting when he gets back. Yes, so with that, are we ready to transition to the waterfront? Okay, well, I will then turn it over to the city manager to kind of introduce the topic. I know we've got some staff here. I think we'll take the public comments at the beginning if that works and then we can, since this is a work session, we'll get those out there. We can talk about them during the presentation. Is that appropriate?
Well, that's, that's fine if that's how you'd like to run it. Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Well, let's, we'll just take the public comments now and then we can proceed.
Sandy Carter.
So while our friends from the public are coming up, I will just remind everyone, this is a work session. Council won't be making any decisions today. This work session is to help prepare council, I'll text, and staff for the potential adoption of the vision plan in November at the business meeting. So just with that context and a reminder to everyone, green light on, mic really close, the mics not only catch for the TV and the recording, but also for the room, as you have all experienced already today. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, Sandy. Just state your name and city residence and you have up to three minutes.
They're also good for germs. My name is Sandy Carter. I now live in unincorporated Portland, just across the river, south of Milwaukee. Dear mayor and council, I sent this last night. It was so late, I was not confident that people would have a chance in their busy lives to read it, so I decided to read it and also get it onto the record on the video. So forgive me if I read this. As a 25-year board member and a representative today of the local preservation nonprofit, Advocates for Willamette Falls Heritage, formerly Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation, I'm very happy this afternoon to witness the official start of the council's important involvement in the waterfront vision planning process. Online, I see that the first strategic goal under the waterfront vision was producing a plan that will move the study areas towards the creation of a world-class destination where people can work, live and recreate. Bravo for setting a goal that lays the foundation for an exceptional future here at such a historically significant and thrilling location. And bravo for enlisting expert community input from groups such as the Historic Review Board. The Advocates, which currently represents the heritage preservation sentiments of more than 500 Westliners, would like at this time to see your adoption of more specific vision language to clarify and focus the third, which we found rather confusing, bulleted recommendation from the Planning Commission. While the working group recommended the following, consider including stronger language in plan for reuse of existing structures. The staff's recommendation, recommended to you, was much vague, more vague than that suggested by us or the working group, and it was add encourage or stronger language for reuse of cultural resources in the cultural heritage district. We recommend clarifying by specifically encouraging the preservation of some of the built industrial structures currently on Moore's Island for repurposing and interpretation. This could encompass buildings, foundations and other interesting structural elements that could physically and visually represent the city's proud industrial heritage. Thank you for enabling and supporting a bold vision that can embrace and represent all of the many layers of this city's unique riverbank heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, for providing comments.
Russ Axelrod.
Welcome back, Russ.
Thank you.
You know, I think you know the drill, but state your name and city residence and you have up to three minutes.
Yeah.
Go over if you need it.
Russ Axelrod, long time resident of Westland. Good to see you all. And sorry I have to be on a day like today when the weather's so beautiful outside, but I only got a chance to look at the packet briefly and from what I saw, I just wanted to get off some brief comments. I shot those to you this morning. Touched a little bit on the history of comments being submitted and a couple of my big concerns right now with where things stand following the final hearing of the Planning Commission on September 17th, which many, some of you were at. And very significantly, what I was looking for in the plan was that finally a change to the map regarding the ponds and then the removal of the plan to put dense housing in our most prized Willamette wetlands and in the 100-year floodplain. Despite the fact that, as you know, the Planning Commission, in its final recommendations, unanimously determined to remove from the Ponds District map the depiction showing this housing development. They found that it overwhelmingly conflicted with not only the description of the planning framework in the plan, but it also was in conflict with overwhelming community input on the need to remove it. What concerns me today is the continued sort of, what I refer to as obfuscation of this housing matter in the wetlands in your packet and, which appear to support the overwhelming desires expressed by the community, as I mentioned, to remove them, to remove the proposal. And now seemingly, seeming to misrepresent or not appear to support a final recommendation by the PC, Planning Commission. The Planning Commission packet describes or characterizes the Planning Commission's findings as considerations, not correctly presenting them as the final recommendations the Planning Commission declared them to be for the plan to move forward. So I looked up, researched, what's the difference between a consideration and a recommendation? And I'll just read this AI printout because I think it's important. A consideration is a factor that requires careful thought or evolution, evaluation, excuse me, when making a decision or forming an opinion. While a recommendation is a strong endorsement of a specific course of action, person or item based on expertise or experience, a recommendation is a specific type of opinion that carries more authority and an expectation of being followed. I would also want to point out for the record that our community supports alternative housing in the Ponds District. And we've made it very clear that what we're opposed to is housing in the Ponds area south of Fifth Avenue. But staff and documentation keeps suggesting that we are opposed to housing in the Ponds District itself. We support alternative housing throughout the waterfront area and in other places. They just have to be properly located. So, you know, I know the Planning Commission was, it was new to them to deliberate on a matter like this, but I'm very proud of them taking on the issues and grateful for that. There were two other items in my packet which addressed things we, I don't think we have the time to go into, but one was the specific need to address the, our Environmental Protection Resource Code for future planning in the waterfront areas, whilst throughout the city. And also our plan in progress with Friends of Willamette Wetlands to advance the cleanup of the ponds before development occurs. And as you know, I've shared some correspondence with you of communications with DEQ about this. We're still in the process of connecting with them and with other regional parties about the matter and we'd like to see that be expedited. So, and I just want to offer my expertise if it's needed or wherever I can help support as we kind of explore what our options are, because we'd like to see it happen in partnership. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Short time I have.
No, we appreciate your comments and we receive them and we also will have a chance to look at the additional issues that you raised at the bottom of your testimony, the water resource code and the DEQ issues. One question I had just to follow up on the, I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly your concern with the current draft and the change from the Planning Commission. Is it just the, is it the map on page 46 of the plan that kind of shows the Fifth Avenue, south of Fifth Avenue as a potential development area?
It's on two maps. I think it's on page 17 and 36 are the map pages.
Okay, sorry, that's, I was looking at the page of the PDF.
Yeah.
So it's page 36 and then what's the other page?
17, I believe it is.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, when I served on the Planning Commission, and this is, maybe it's done differently now, but I encourage this when I testify to the Planning Commission that they take the time to deliberate, make the final changes, actually make the changes to the figures themselves and bring them forward. But they passed it on, was just with their recommendations. They followed staff's recommendation to adopt one of their motions, which they did. And I was hoping to have that, see that process done at the Planning Commission because I think it's appropriate for them to be doing that and it limits what you have to do because you have so many priority things to work on. But now here you're faced with having to correct the record, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And just want to make sure that's in the progress.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Great.
Just pointing out the specifics and appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Any other questions right now? Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. And next speaker, please.
Terrence Shoemaker.
Hi, Terrence, welcome, welcome back.
Joy to be here.
State your name and city residence and you have up to three minutes.
Terrence Shoemaker, Willamette area, Westland. I'll probably reemphasize a couple of things Russ said, but I feel that the planning department is not providing you with accurate information based on what transpired at the September 17th Planning Commission meeting and seems to be giving little credence to the vision plan, which states that it is a, quote, "a preferred community vision plan." What is preferred by the community is preservation of vital wetlands and natural areas. As a result of the September 17th Planning Commission meeting, three recommendations were submitted and the current wording of the second recommendation is remove reference to housing development in the Ponds District. As Russ indicated, we, the Friends of Willamette Wetlands, are not against housing in the Pond District. Our testimonies over the past months have specifically addressed the 35 acres south of Fifth Avenue that includes the wetlands and the Blue Heron settling pond. This is an area of natural flooding hazards, man-made industrial wastes and an area of potential liability for the city if irresponsible development is allowed to occur here in direct opposition to the public will. We feel there are other potential areas in the Pond District that are far better suited for development. Just because a local developer has a purchase agreement with Clackamas County Water Environment Services for those 35 acres does not mean it should be developed. On page six of the September 20th, 25th memo from Darren Weiss is proposed resolution 2025-13. The third from the last statement says, whereas the Westland Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 17th, 2025 and recommended adoption of the Westland Waterfront Vision Plan. This is a mischaracterization because the Planning Commission amended the vision plan to reflect the three items mentioned in the memo, the most important being the second recommendation of remove reference to housing development in the Ponds District. We believe that additional wording should be added to that specific resolution whereas statement to clarify that public input led the Planning Commission to offer three changes to the plan. And as Russ mentioned, the map on page 36 of the vision plan is out of date and should be updated, definitely should be updated to reflect the recommendations of the Planning Commission. I am deeply concerned that this lack of clarity and oversight by the planning department is not representing the overwhelming support for wetlands preservation by Westland citizens, the voluminous public comments and testimony, nor the clear recommendations presented by the Planning Commission. Therefore, in your study of this plan and in your deliberations, I hope that you will request all documentation for the request all documentation for the Westland Waterfront Vision Plan be updated to accurately reflect the points that we have addressed. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments and suggestions. Any other speakers?
Jim Edwards.
Hi, Jim, welcome back. I think back to when we went and toured the Vancouver waterfront with you and you helped set that up. So thank you, and we're glad to have your expertise in this project. So thanks. And just state your name and city residence, and go ahead.
Jim Edwards. I've said before, but not in front of this city council, how impressed I am with the staff progress and the consultants' progress on the Vision Plan. They've done a great job and incorporated a lot of input from me and other parties to the plan. So it's much better today than, than it was two years ago. Some people have interpreted the terms in the plan within the cultural heritage area, site adaptation, to include the possibility of preserving some existing buildings or built items. The Planning Commission suggested adding language to the terms in the cultural heritage area, and some have interpreted those terms, cultural resources, to include preserving existing buildings or built items. I think the plan should use language as much as possible while leaving room for flexibility that does not require interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other speakers?
There are none.
Well, thank you to the four members of the public who made time out of your day today to come and share your thoughts. And we've also, of course, folks, if anybody's listening, this is the first work session. We're going to have some more process to get to the adoption phase. If you have thoughts in the community, you can email us at citycouncil@westlandoregon.gov and we'll consider your comments on this monumental, I think, and important plan for our city. And with that, I'll turn it over to John to introduce the, the speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to try not to do what I usually do, which is to give the entire thing that the next person is about to say. So in this case, all I will do is introduce Darren, who has been managing this project for a long time, as you know. Darren will introduce his team and just, I guess I already made the point earlier when I was speaking, today's a work session. Our intention is to receive direction from you, hear public comments, and make sure that we are on the right track as we head towards setting you up for success in, or consideration of the Community Vision Plan. So Darren, thank you for being here. Introduce your team and take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. So thanks for having us here today. Again, with me is the consultant team that was pivotal in helping get this plan put together and before you tonight. We've got Adrian Witty with Tool Design and Jennifer Shook with Leland Consulting. So Adrian will be giving the presentation with Jennifer. Before they start though, I'm just going to remind you what, what our goal is here tonight. So we hope you have two recommendations in front of you, one from the working group, one from the Planning Commission. Both were just referenced by the, the public comments. So what we are intent here tonight, or the goal, we'd get clear direction from the council on, based on those two recommendations and your review of the plan. If you would like to see language changes to the plan, to be very, very clear with us tonight, and then we can bring those language changes back to you at a second work session on October 21st. And if everything looks good to the council at that point in time, Adrian and his team would then make the changes to the plan, which would be brought before you on November 18th in a public hearing. We intentionally did not make changes to the plan based on the other recommendations, just so we got it in front of council to make sure that council wanted to see those changes or additional changes, so we didn't have Adrian and his team continually updating the plan and spending the money that they might not be able to be here tonight. So anyhow, that was the intent and that will be the goal for this evening, is to get clear direction from council. We will bring you back language changes and then make the final changes before the public hearing. So I think Adrian was probably good with, at any time, if you've got a question, stopping, stopping Adrian, we'd be happy to answer them as, as we move through the presentation. So I will turn it over to Adrian and Jennifer and get moving.
Great, thanks, Darren. Yeah, for the record, Adrian Witty, I'm a senior engineer with Tool Design. If I move away from the microphone, please feel free to, to stop me and correct me. And as Darren mentioned, please feel free to, to interrupt with questions. We do have a couple of places along this presentation, yeah, to, to pause and, and get your input on, and ask questions on those. Very excited to be here to, to present at this moment in time. As you all sort of said in your, your earlier updates, this, the waterfront is a, is a dynamic and constantly changing area. There's always new things happening there. It's also an area of great opportunity, but also great complexity. And we're very conscious of that as we go through here. So what I'm hoping to do today, what I wanted to start with was just to really outline, firstly, what is in the Vision Plan and what, what we're intending to do with this plan, and then what it really doesn't do and what would be sort of the next steps from this stage. So really what this Vision Plan is intended to do is to bring forward, you know, opportunities and really outline what are the opportunities in this area and reflecting the community and the property owners and all the stakeholders in this area and what they see as the opportunities for this area. What we know about this area is also that the city doesn't own much of any, any property here. So it's imperative that obviously this plan be implemented in concert with, with the property owners and stakeholders in the area. What it does look at is, you know, where there are opportunities for new development, economic development, mixed use opportunities, as well as natural resource preservation and other opportunities for celebrating the indigenous and the industrial heritage of the site. It also outlines what are the goals of the Vision Plan. It's, it's intended to be, again, community-driven effort, and we'll go through as part of this presentation, the almost decade-long process that's been going on for this Vision Plan that outlines, you know, how the, how the public and the community have been involved in this effort and driving this effort. And then, as I mentioned, also making sure that we're reflecting, you know, the, the complexities of this site, both physical, topography, regulatory, all those complexities that are in there. What the Vision Plan... Oh, great, excellent, thank you. Try again. Technology's great. There we are, thank you. Yeah. All right, the, the intention of the Vision Plan is also that there, at this moment in time, that we maintain some level of flexibility. This is not intended to be, you know, a change to the comp plan or the zoning code or the development code. We have outlined as part of our implementation plan what might be some of those next steps, but it is not, not intended that those steps necessarily be taken at this stage. And so what, I guess what that means is there is room and opportunity in the future for all of these various recommendations of the plan or the vision, or the Vision Plan to tease out some of the details and be able to adapt and change as time goes on and as these, as, as the area continues to change and update. The next steps would be, this, this vision is really meant to be a guiding document, and then there'd be sort of ongoing community engagement that would go with those sort of comp plan updates and those zoning amendments moving forward. So on the next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a, you know, large and complicated site, and very early in the process, it's recognized that, yeah, the, this is a 275-acre site and it's not all the same. And so some of the early engagement way back in 2016 actually helped to identify three districts for this area. The Historic City Hall District, which is up near the Arch Bridge and the I-205 interchange. The Cultural Heritage District, which is sort of the middle portion that includes Moore's Island, the falls, the access to the falls themselves, the PGE Hydro Plant and other sort of areas in the uplands there. And then lastly, the Pond District, which includes the two sort of tailing ponds that are down in the lower area that connect to the Willamette neighborhood in the, in the back end there. On the next slide, we've outlined really what the sort of intent of the Vision Plan is. So it's to really, you know, present sort of an inspired and achievable framework for what this waterfront could be. And, you know, what does that mean in terms of both access and amenities for residents, but also, you know, creating opportunities for visitors to experience the falls, the natural beauty of the area and, and everything that's sort of in this vicinity as well. Just, and just to outline what our process has been, so we have restarted this project. As I said, it's almost a decade old, this vision, this vision planning process and builds on multiple decades of planning work in this area. We'll go through in a minute what some of the process has been, but our, the previous outreach was started by staff back in 2016, and as part of that came up with some guiding principles, those districts that you saw, and also came up with the transportation improvements for the Willamette Falls Drive Concept Plan that are now incorporated as part of the TSP. Unfortunately, we had a pandemic in the middle of this effort, and this is really a restart of that effort. As part of this, we had formed the Project Working Group that included, you know, multiple stakeholders in the area as well, as well as residents and other committee members. We had a technical advisory committee that included neighboring communities, Trimat, ODOT, and other, and other partners in the area. And we've also done sort of extensive sort of property owner outreach and partner coordination, including with the various tribal interests in the area as well. This timeline is probably a bit hard to read on the screen, but it's really just to outline, and this is in the Vision Plan as well, the, the, the community engagement effort and the timeline of, of, of our various efforts here and what sort of happened along the process. And we'll talk through these in a little bit more detail on the next few slides. So in that first engagement period, from 2016 to 2019, pre-pandemic, yes, staff conducted, I think, five, yeah, five open houses with, and you can sort of see the attendees' numbers and the timeline of those on the screen here. There's also an extensive outreach process, including regular property owner meetings to keep them updated with the, the planning process and also get their input on what they would like to see in the neighborhood, in the, in the, in the district. And as well as that, a lot of engagement focused on going out to the community, including to various neighborhood associations, having tabling events at the markets or going to different civic groups and presenting on the plan as well. So as I mentioned earlier, what came out of that early engagement was those planning districts. And you'll see as we move through the Vision Plan, those different districts have different opportunities, different challenges, and are also maybe in different stages of readiness for moving forward as far, as, as far as like implementation of the plan. What else, we'll talk about the guiding principles here in a minute, and I, and I already mentioned the transportation improvements that came out of that. There was also a lot of discussion on what are the preferred land uses in the area that community members would like to see. Excellent. So in terms of guiding principles, what really rose to the surface from that engagement effort were these four characteristics that were sort of the pillars, if you like, that were used in the development of the Vision Plan itself. So looking where there are those sort of reinvestment opportunities, that economic development pieces, where there are transportation improvements needed to create this, a more sort of multimodal environment, but also maintaining, obviously, there are working functionality that needs to happen on the site, including the PGE plant, amongst other things that requires access and has, has a lot of sort of needs in terms of its access there. River access was a, was a thing that come, that came up regularly. People want to be near the water, see the falls, but also be able to, you know, traverse up and down the river, as we heard from council president earlier. You know, getting on the water was a, was a key thing we heard throughout the process with the locks being an important component of that to sort of open that traversable network. And then lastly, as we've also heard from some of the testimony here today is maintaining the historic character and celebrating both the indigenous heritage of the site and the, you know, almost century-long, well, over-century-long industrial heritage of, of the area as well. So what we did with all that, so in our most recent sort of iteration of this project, we took that early engagement and those guiding principles and tried to form that into a draft Vision Plan that was then taken out for stakeholder, working group, and community engagement in around, in early 2024. And from that, we heard, and we'll go through what some of those themes were that we heard from that outreach, we created an updated Vision Plan around September of 2024, and then again, sort of shopped that around through the community and various advisory groups. And then on the next slide, from there, again, refined the Vision Plan to take out a, a final draft of that Vision Plan in late 2024, early 2025, just to get a sense from the community and the various stakeholders, you know, have we, have we reflected the community feedback in, in that, in those plans? And then most recently, updates from that for what's the final Vision Plan that, final is not final, final, but final, that has gone through, is what is basically in front of you now, with recommendations from the Project Working Group and Planning Commission, and hopefully from you today, about what you would like to see in the, in the version that goes to public hearing. Just quickly, the most recent round of engagement, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what we've, what some of those touchpoints have been. We have had a couple of open houses as part of this process, over 100 attendees at each of those. We had an active website for the project that has the visitation, sort of numbers are up on the screen. We've also conducted two different surveys at various points, firstly, on the, on the very preliminary Vision Plan, to get people's feedback on where they'd like to see changes. And then more recently, at the start of this year, looking at, you know, getting a gauge on whether we've reflected those comments on the most recent iteration, and we'll go through what that looks like. And again, tabling events and presentations to various neighborhood associations and civic groups as well. This is just a continuation of that to show where we've, we've had touchpoints, again, with property owners and tribal interests. We've also had a variety, different stages of working group meetings with our, with our Project Working Group and our Technical Advisory Group, and just, and briefings with yourselves and Planning Commission and others as we've gone through the process. Next slide. So just quickly, let's, I'd like to go through what we heard from that engagement. So what the overwhelming sense was is that there is a general excitement for something to happen at the waterfront. People feel like it is an underutilized asset in some, in some places, in some ways, a visual blight, and there's just a general excitement. Now, that varies across the different districts about, you know, what should happen and the level of what should happen in each of those areas. And the other big thing that we mentioned was real excitement around being able to get to the water, see it, get to it, get on it. And that was paramount throughout the process. As I mentioned before, we also understood from this process that partnerships are really essential. And, you know, we mentioned, mentioned earlier, as we toured the Vancouver waterfront as an example, is that, that's an example of how, you know, a... you know, a, a place where, what's a, understanding what is the city's role in being able to bring together those different partners and forming a cohesive vision plan that those partners can get behind. So their, their support is essential and as is the support of the sort of the tribal interests and other interest groups in the area, not just the, the property owners. Not foreign to all of you, of course, is, you know, there's, there's significant assets that we can build on along the waterfront that this vision plan is built on. And, you know, really, one of the things that people were most excited about is that the falls themselves and what is possible around those falls is the potential for a significant regional attraction that could really spur investment and interest and really put West Lynn on the map and be able to tie with other opportunities in the local area to, to sort of create this, this, this large presence or regional attraction that's like significant to everyone. And it was really an opportunity, as we mentioned, to, to look at, you know, what is the, what are the different assets along the site, both river access, indigenous and industrial heritage, and how do we, how do we utilize those to, to form this sort of cohesive experience and noting also that there are limitations, we'll talk about access in a minute, but also, you know, there's an operating power plant on the site that, you know, is governed by a FERC boundary that has security clearance and all these other complexities that need to be counted in there as well. As I mentioned earlier, the district diversity really came through in that public engagement. City Hall, that sort of Historic City Hall area was, was identified as, as definitely the sort of the most logical for both early and also higher density development. And a mixed use environment that could maybe support that attraction of the falls when, when that was, when that opens up. So there's some synergies there between those two districts, so leading into the cultural heritage. You know, creating experiences and, but also, you know, maintaining critical function of that area. And then in, and, and then in the, in the Pond District, as we've heard, there's the, probably the area with the most sort of consternation around priorities in that area, but we heard, you know, definitely priorities for natural environment. You know, wetlands preservation and, and complementary and lower intensity uses in those areas that sort of fit with that, with that dynamic. And then, as I mentioned, access is sort of a key driver to the vision plan as well, and that comes in a, in a variety of different forms. We mentioned the FERC boundary for the hydroelectric station. Access to the island is obviously challenging. And the topography to meet that is, is also difficult in that particular area. There's also the transportation network that would support this as well and thinking about, yes, the Historic City Hall District might be the most sort of early for, in terms of a, a land use readiness and a fairly reasonably flat spot and, and some, and all the opportunities that go with that, but also a complex traffic environment with the I two O five interchange, the Arch Bridge. And what does that mean for Lamet Falls Drive? Are there different street needs that, would we need to reconsider what the Lamet Falls Drive Concept Plan includes to be able to facilitate some of the changes that the community would like to see in that area? And then what does this mean for multimodal access and particularly, you know, being able to, for, for example, the, a ped bike bridge that ODOT has studied? And is there an opportunity for that to connect Tom Water Village to Moors Island to Historic City Hall and then over the Arch Bridge and create a, create this loop that sort of facilitates the, the experience that we talked about in, in being able to unlock and see the falls, those sorts of things? And I didn't want to forget on that last bullet point on the slides is very importantly, what does that mean for, you know, when the, when the locks are upgraded, what does that mean in terms of access for, for on the river? So we talk about around the river, but there's also these opportunities for, you know, this reopening of the locks is a, is a new and exciting opportunity for the, for river traffic there as well. So I wanted to talk through what that all means in terms of we put together these district planning frameworks for each of those sub areas and what that, what, what those sort of look like. And then we'll sort of pause for your comment and question and, and then look at implementation. So the Historic City Hall District, as I mentioned, is, is sort of the area that's probably identified as the earliest or most ready area in terms of, you know, its ability to support maybe more mixed use or higher density development. And could be sort of the cornerstone of building off the resources of, you know, Historic City Hall and its current reuse, as well as, you know, using it as a, as a gateway opportunity to whatever happens in the future in the Cultural Heritage District. Yeah, some of the things that came up as part of that, part of the community engagement process is this area was really seen as an opportunity to create a civic sort of heart for West Lynn. And so it was, there was a lot of emphasis on things like plazas, public spaces, main streets and commercial uses to allow people to come in, gather in those spaces and, and really create sort of something new and, and exciting in that, in that area. As I mentioned on the next slide, there's, there's also a variety of challenges in this, in, in this area as well, and, and most of those relate to particularly the street network and traffic functionality. The, you know, the I two O five interchange, the Arch Bridge, maintaining access through that area. And then also with that is, you know, I mentioned this is a gateway to the Cultural Heritage District. Well, that also means that, at least for the time being, that, that access to P G E site comes through this area. Access to certain functions on the river, such as the docks and, and other, other uses come through this area. And there is steep topography that, that would need to be counted in some of those, in some of those areas to create these opportunities. In the, yeah, I guess it's so, so support. What we heard here in the support, support column, if you like, is again, a real excitement in this area to create an iconic destination. And also, people, I think, really recognize this as an opportunity to be the almost economic engine of the redevelopment and, and being able to also form this link in the chain between the Wollamette neighborhood, the Bolton neighborhood, and then further along the, the Robinwood neighborhood. So the waterfront really being sort of the, the link in that chain, also being the link in that sort of Oregon City, Tom Water Village chain as well. And then challenges we've talked a, a lot about, but traffic and parking impact with that intensified development. I, I mentioned this earlier, but one of the key things that came out of the public engagement was this desire to create sort of a commercial main street through this area. And the Wollamette Falls Drive and the street network that would need to be supported that in a, in a fairly constrained network, I think would need to be studied further to be able to understand whether in its current format, the, the street network as defined could support that or whether something different needs to happen there to be able to make that happen. And then obviously there's P G E and, and other truck access through here as well. In the Cultural Heritage District, yeah, this is an area that has is, is mostly owned by, by, by a couple of different property owners. There was excitement about particularly the opportunity for public access to the falls, to see the falls, to Moors Island, and I think also to, to what Moors Island could look like. And we got a variety of responses around that from, you know, just being able to be on the island, but also what is the opportunity to reuse both structure, but also, you know, materials, if, if nothing else, from industrial heritage to be able to celebrate the industrial heritage of this site as well. The biggest factors, you know, in, in this area obviously are you know, maintaining an operational P G E hydrostation while also gaining access in a fairly constrained location to Moors Island. And here, obviously, there's the P G properties and, and the properties there will need to go through their own planning process. So this, again, we, we wanted to maintain some flexibility here to show what it could be, but not necessarily preclude what, what that process might bring forward. And, you know, there is steep topography in this area, but that could be an opportunity, for example, for terrorist development on the upland slopes. So that will play out probably in the future with property owners that bring forward their ideas through that planning process. I think we mentioned most of the sort of opportunities and constraints in this area. I talked through a lot of these. I won't dwell on this slide. We can go to the next one. And just see if there's anything I missed here. I, I think, I think I captured most of those. Those things there, yeah. So in the Pond District, as I mentioned earlier, I think the biggest thing we heard here was there's obviously, this is, this is an area that has both a connection to the Wollamette neighborhood and also in that area, you know, that, that, that neighborhood there is, you know, fairly narrow streets and limited sidewalks and as well, this area is also in, a lot of it is in floodplain and you've got the two, the two tailings ponds that, you know, to do anything on those sites would need some significant remediation of those, of those. And, and currently they're under different ownership and different zoning. But what we heard in this, in this area is similar to what you see in the images, is there other opportunities here to create public open space, particularly focused around wetlands restoration? And then where are there maybe some opportunities to, to come up with, you know, lower intensity uses that are complementary to that? And that could be some level of residential development. It could also be, you know, people want to access the water. What does that mean in terms of, you know, associated, you know, rental of, of craft and other things to get on the water and, and other opportunities like that? I think we've mentioned a, a lot of this, but you know, the, as I said, the, I think one of the biggest challenges here is, is access to this area. So what does that mean in terms of gaining new access points and making sure that, that the existing neighborhoods are not you know, overstressed and overburdened, as well as obviously a lot of interest from, you know, what this site could be in terms of environmental remediation as well. I think we touched on most of those points as well, so. Great. The, the last thing I wanted to talk about was, we had a lot of conversation, particularly with the Project Working Group around housing density and parking and what that might look like in each of these various areas. So we've, we just put together some examples of what low density, medium density and sort of a medium high density could look like and where those might be appropriate in each of the districts. And these are examples that you're seeing on the screen from various areas around the Portland Metro area as well as Southwest Washington. You know, the, the top examples show, you know, sort of less than 10 units per acre. You know, with generally parking courts or, or parking having to be accounted for onsite. I was interested to hear the Sustainability Advisory Board and their work previously, but one of the things that, you know, for, in terms of reducing transportation emissions, is one of the best things that we can do is look at where are there opportunities for residential density, mixed use development that can, that can really reduce our trip making burden on the system. And so that the medium, sort of medium density examples on the bottom of this screen might be something that's more appropriate to, for example, certain areas of the Pond District that have, you know, a little bit more sort of structured, you know, parking incorporated into, you know, this sort of medium density townhouse style development. And then on the next slide, what does a sort of medium, medium to high thirty, thirty eight units per acre density look like that could be more appropriate for the Historic City Hall or the Cultural Heritage District? So now we're talking about, you know, sort of multiple stories, you know, structured or incorporated parking into those examples. So that's just to give a sense of what sorts of development types might be, might be possible on the site. So we do have a lot of more, more detail about, you know, some of the implementation considerations, but I do want to just pause and, and get thoughts and questions from you so far.
Thank you very much. This has been a great presentation so far. Lots of information. I feel like everything important's been covered. Counselor Groner has a question and then we can just go around.
Thank you. I have a few comments. First of all, this is a vision plan and not a comprehensive plan. So at this point, there are still lots of decisions to be made, facts to be gathered, some of them technical, some of them getting inputs from the various constituencies. And of, because of that, there's some vagueness in the plan. And in some cases, options are stated. And there's a lot of controversy about some of those options. Couple of big ones are essentially development of housing south of Fifth, for example, on wetland preservation. Another is the extent to which historic things like the buildings that belong to the paper plant can be preserved or how expensive that would be. So, you know, in the first case, the question is, if we decide we cannot do housing south of Fifth, is that a taking? That's probably a legal question. Do we want to get sued? In the case of the paper plant, somebody has to go in there and study the seismic and other, to what extent the building can be preserved or needs to be torn down. So the point is there's vagueness in the plan and I think we need basically to find some more facts. Some of them legal, some of them technical. Perhaps after we approve the plan, as long as we understand that we don't know everything today, we will uncover things. I was in the consulting business for about seven years and I noticed one of the things we were always told to do is the last part of the presentation was next steps, which always, by the way, included get more consulting. Anyway, but that's an important point. I think we ought to be talking about next steps in the process. Thank you.
Counselor, you raised a good question about the South Fifth Avenue housing issue that's been brought up. And I think the main issue for our consideration in this process is with regard to the map and, you know, what changes can we do to the map? Because I've been thinking about the map and where it says potential development area on South Fifth Avenue. Could we take that out? Obviously, nothing that we do with this plan would bind any potential developer from coming in with an application. That'd be subject to our land use process and our city code. So it's kind of more of a policy, like a aspirational statement right now for us to take, take that language out. Some community members have asked for that, but it wouldn't have any potential like preclusive effect on a, on a person coming in for a development application. So I guess the question to, to rephrase and complement Counselor Groner's question is, what about, what's the deal with that map? And are, are we able to change it?
Yes, is the, is the quick answer. And so the Planning Commission had a pretty strong conversation around this. And they did recommend, I, I showed them some, some elevation data around that area in the floodplain shown on the map. We could go back to if you want to, but the floodplain actually goes a little more straight across the property based on the elevation. So the nineteen ninety six flood boundary is more accurate. So the Planning Commission recommended changing the flood boundary to, to nineteen ninety six. And then removing reference to the housing development in the Ponds District. So we support that. And then move, and then we could clarify that the, the development opportunity area is outside of the floodplain. So it would be a quick, quick change to the map to, to, to show that we're not promoting development in the wetland or the floodplain.
I get why people are saying that. I mean, they're concerned about that.
Yep, yeah. And that, and that was, that was one of the, or two of the, two of the. Yep, yeah. And that was one of the, or two of the, two of the recommendations from the Planning Commission. We fully support that. So we would just be looking for direction from council to move forward with that.
And so that would be like removing the yellow over that property on the map?
That would be up to your discretion. We would say keep it in there because it is developable property under our current zoning rules. We could just remove the reference to the medium density residential in the planning stages.
Okay.
Because there are other areas on the map that show as potential development areas also in the same district.
Thank you for that clarification. We can talk about that as a council. And the other issue that Counselor Groner brought up that I wanted to clarify was with regard to some testimony from the advocates about encouraging stronger language on preservation of the historic buildings. Where would we potentially add that in into the plan? Would that be like in the Cultural Heritage District? And I'm sure we can wordsmith something in between today and the next work session that we have on the topic to kind of respond to some of the comments there. But just wanted to ask kind of what that might look like.
Yeah, so I did meet with the advocates group, probably in April or May, I believe. And we did make some changes to the language based on my conversation with them. One of the places we did it specifically was in the guiding principles as opposed to in one of the specific districts. So it would be privy to the entire plan and not just one district itself. So we did, we did put in, under reinvestment opportunities, we changed the language to say, encourage rehabilitation and reuse of historic structures. So that's one area that we put it in. Be open to additional language elsewhere. But we felt that that covered the entire planning area and not just Moore's Island itself because there are historic structures elsewhere.
Thank you. Does that help answer your questions as well? Okay, I had the same kind of line of questioning. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Counselor Brake and then Council President Baumgartner.
Thank you. This is so informative. And I've been through so many of these presentations as the liaison to the Planning Commission. I've certainly heard a lot of consternation about how we told the Planning Commission, we've been to these meetings and nothing has changed. But I heard Mr. Weiss comment that he hasn't updated anything because we are just hearing the recommendations from the working group and the Planning Commission. This is our first work session on this to get us to the hearing to adopt it. And through our conversations today, some of those changes could be made before we have our next work session. Is that correct? Like taking out the comment about the, in planning?
Yes, yes. That is, again, the goal of the work session today is get councils input on what you would like to see changed in the plan based on the two groups' recommendations, then your own review of the plan. And we would come back on the 21st with those, with alternative language based on those recommendations.
Thank you. Counselor Bonnington, you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. I'm incredibly excited to be a part of this. As a child, this was actually something that I thought would be cool to be a part of when I grew up. So really weird synchronicity there. Love it. There are 150 years of history regarding the industry there and somewhere between 10,000 and 15,000 years of human history in that region. And then who even knows when that actually formed as a waterfall naturally? So my point is, there's been an unfortunate kind of obfuscation of that natural wonder by much of what's there now, to the point that a great many people who live around here don't even know it exists. So I'm certainly a big fan of history and I enjoy that a lot. I think we need to carefully balance what is preserved and how that impacts what is visible, what is, to the extent where we're able to restore this natural beauty. I would hate to lose all of the history there. But I think it would be short sighted to commit to preserving things we haven't yet studied or evaluated for whether they can remain. So I agree very much with what Counselor Groner said. We can commit to investigating that and commit to being inclined to preserve what we can. But I think it would be difficult to blanket commit to preservation of things we don't yet understand.
Thank you for that, Counselor.
Council President Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the comments. It helps me so much to listen to everyone's comments. So thank you. I agree, Counselor Bonnington, and thank you for the presentation. This is, there's so much to consider. I was, as part of our League of Oregon Cities events last week, we got to, Counselor Brake and I got to go on a tour of the OMSI District. And it's so exciting what's proposed there. And so it made me think about what's the possibility of partnering with OMSI/Metro? I have a bunch of notes scratched on here. I don't think I'm going to try to read them all. But on that topic that both Counselor Groner and Counselor Bonnington brought up, I had written down how to choose language that encourages a use without restricting or impinging another future use. So I also value history, industrial history, I think is very interesting. People enjoy going to a site and seeing that sort of interpretation. But I'm really interested in honoring the wishes of the heritage group, but without restricting, and in some ways potentially unknowingly, having an unintended consequence of language, preservation language. So that's where I'm interested in finding out about. And then I also wrote down how to plan that will best attract eligibility for outside funding sources, whether it's transit oriented district funds from Metro or funds I'm not aware of. And also attract future users of the site, whether they're commercial or industrial potentially even. I've envisioned, you know, we could, maybe a stand-up paddleboard manufacturer will want to come in or kayak or canoe manufacturer to some of these sites that they could have display and sort of interact with the river with, as part of their company's activities. So those are some of the notes that I've written down. They're not really specific directions. But those are, and also the other thing I will highlight is how we could partner with anyone, any entity or agency on habitat restoration with relation to cleanup of the two settling ponds. I mean, the settling pond on the PGE property doesn't get as much press because it's even harder to see. But it's even bigger than the Blue Heron Pond. And also potentially more difficult to clean up because of just access. I would, without really knowing what kind of cleanup I'm even talking about. But that's just a little bit of my thoughts. So thank you again for all of the presentations. And thank you so much to the advocates who've been coming and communicating with us on their wishes. I appreciate that input.
So is this an appropriate time to ask the council for the consensus on the three recommendations from Planning Commission? Or do you have a slide on that?
We do. So we do have some implementation work that we could go through or we can skip straight to the Planning Commission.
You can continue through and then we'll get to that.
Okay.
You can continue through. And then, once we get to that point, we'll talk about the three recommendations.
Great. Excellent. Yeah, so as part of the plan, we did three, we focused on three things about implementation. What would be, to Counselor Groner's point, next steps on this? One is looking at what would this mean for comp plan development code changes in the future? What would this mean for the next transportation system plan update? And then some work on implementation and financing. So we'll go through those fairly quickly, as quickly as we can. So in terms of the comprehensive plan, which is really, you know, guiding the long range growth and development of the city, the study area currently includes three land use designations that you can see on the screen. Medium density residential, industrial and commercial on the next slide. So those designations, in general, don't adequately support the vision plan goals. So for example, medium density residential, as it's currently defined, includes a lot of shielding residential areas, which is sort of in conflict to that sort of mixed use environment. Industrial excludes housing. And then the mixed use commercial does support some of the vision plan, but has certain policies like protecting residential areas that sort of conflicts with some of those. And we focused in on the Historic City Hall District and what that might mean in terms of that district's changes that might need to happen there. So what we would recommend here is that we're really sort of redesignating areas for that medium density residential industrial area to be mixed use commercial because that is greater flexibility. Again, these are just recommendations of what might need to happen in the future. Establishing a waterfront district and really basing those designations and any future comp plan updates on models and templates that have been established as part of the Robinwood and Bolton neighborhood updates as part of the Vision 43 work. Next slide. And this is just an example of some of that work that's been happening in the Bolton District and some language changes that would be similar in terms of creating this overlay, if you like, of having the vision plan act as sort of a guide for future changes in that area. In terms of the development code, you know, there are allowable uses, conditional uses and development standards in that code. And in our particular area with medium density residential and general commercial and industrial, there are some changes that would probably need to happen from the development code as it stands to facilitate changes in the Historic City Hall District on the next slide. This is just a sort of a snapshot of, for example, what the general commercial designation allows in terms of different types of uses. And you're drilling into some of those, for example, water dependent uses not allowed currently in general commercial, which is sort of counter to what's in the vision plan currently. And light industrial conditional as an example on the next slide. So what that really means is, you know, there are some key constraints of the current designations. For example, residential limitations that would allow residential uses only on the upper floors, which might be counter to some of the mixed use development potential in the area. And then that zoning sort of rigidity, if you like, where really limited, it limits sort of that higher intensity mixed use development that would be needed in this area. And then just some specific examples of what the development code means in terms of lot coverage and height restrictions that might be counter to particularly what we were looking at in the vision plan for the Historic City Hall District. Again, these would be future considerations that would need to come back at a later date. And so some of those recommendations that, you know, would need to be considered in the future would be using the general commercial zone as a framework, but creating a new, more comprehensive mixed use zone that could apply in this area. And so what that mixed use zone would do is allow for ground floor residential on certain building types. It would also support the increased sort of height and floor area ratios more consistent with the development goals of the Historic City Hall District. And also encourage that more active street use that is really, you know, necessary for that commercial Main Street environment. And then lastly, you know, future rezoning in the Cultural Heritage District and the Ponds District may also need to consider some other use changes depending on what happens in those areas. And again, this isn't pointing in a specific direction, but just pointing out where some of the code language currently falls short of some of the potential uses in the area. We can skip this slide. Oh, sorry. No, the last one here is, one of the other recommendations is just to make sure that the mixed use zone is sort of coordinated with the Willamette and Walton River Protection Overlay, just to provide those environmental safeguards to the uses in those areas. So our next implementation study, which is an appendix to the vision plan, is what does this all sort of mean for the transportation system plan? So the TSP is sort of an addendum to the comprehensive plan that sets out the 20-year goals for the transportation system. The most recent update of the Westland TSP was in 2016. And then there's been minor updates since then to incorporate the Highway 43 and Willamette Falls Drive concept plans that we talked about earlier. So generally, those TSPs on the next slide, you know, get updated every seven to 10 years. And so, you know, an update of the TSP is probably due fairly soon. And what that would mean is it's an opportunity to both incorporate growth and any changes to the comp plan that might come forward out of the Vision 43 process and the waterfront vision process. And then also, there's been some rulemaking changes, as councils are aware, for the transportation planning rule to bring in the CFAC rulemaking that would also be a chance for the TSP to sort of update to be in compliance with those. And if we focus on that one a little bit more, no, you can go to the next slide, actually. So what that means is, you know, those transportation planning rules were brought in to try and meet Oregon's climate and pollution reduction targets. And so what it requires is that jurisdictions similar to West Lynn designate climate friendly areas that are subject to different and often less strenuous transportation requirements. On the next slide, where there are these sort of mixed use dense environments that can really support a lot of sort of reduced trip making and sort of multimodal transportation. And so in the metro area, those climate friendly areas are represented by Metro's regional and town centers. And the Historic City Hall would certainly align itself well to the definition of a CFA and an original town center, oh, sorry, a town center. And so, you know, the, so I guess the upshot of that is there's an opportunity here to look as those town center boundaries are being defined. And there's future opportunities to update those. What does that mean in terms of incorporating, for example, parts or all of the Historic City Hall District at some point in the future? So that it's incorporated within the town center designation. As I mentioned, the town center designation does, it does a few things for you. I think firstly, it, to Council President's point earlier, is how can we leverage other funding opportunities? It does definitely get you more a foot in the door on Metro's original transportation plan and opportunities that come out of that, as well as the state's sort of targets towards emissions reduction. And then the transportation analysis requirements for such an area is more around multimodal transportation. Where are there gaps in the network? And then focusing more on what does that mean in terms of additional trip generation to the ODOT highway network? So that's some of the benefits, if you like, of the town center designation here. And I'll hand this over to Jennifer to talk about implementation financing.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Schuck with Leland Consulting Group. I'm going to be talking about the public-private partnerships aspect of this. As you know, most of the land is not owned by the city. So defining what the city's role is within the implementation is really important. So this implementation plan is a roadmap to move the vision forward toward adoption, construction, and fulfillment of this past decade of all the work that everybody's done. And again, identifies the city's role in catalyzing development on land you don't own. Next slide. So the city is a catalyst for private development. I'll talk a little bit more about what that means practically, but you're the holder of the vision through this vision plan, you're the convener of partnerships and the public, and also there's an opportunity for you to really lead on this project. Very wisely, the city implemented tax increment financing in this area, which is going to be a really key part of this, strategically utilizing those funds, working with partners to identify where you can best invest that money to catalyze development and also meet public priorities. And then formalize and strengthen partnerships and coordination with landowners and other stakeholders like the tribes as you move forward. So Adrian talked about the regulatory controls as the first part of that, you know, you control the zoning, the comprehensive plan map. But in terms of the public-private partnerships, your job is to leverage the unified vision and the plan. You have some control over entitlements and public infrastructure, so as you're working with partners, understanding where maybe expedited permitting or TIF investment or other infrastructure investment could help support those developments. And then right now, there's a lot of partners, there's a lot of property owners and stakeholders and people with varying interests in this area, but there's no one clear leader. And as the holders of the vision plan and, you know, the city of West Lynn, you are the leader. You have the opportunity to step into that void and really take that active role in working with partners. So some of the partners, as you know, are PGE, the Willamette False Trust, Belgravia, ODOT, and the other landowners, as well as additional stakeholders. So these are some organizational actions that are going to set the stage for these public-private partnerships. The first, which you're already on your way to, is adopting the waterfront vision plan. Next is initiating formal collaboration with key property owners and partners through memorandums of understanding. This will formalize the relationship and make sure that you're working together in a way that is beneficial for all parties. Then, once those MOUs are in place, undertaking detailed planning, so this is things like, you know, trail alignment and street alignment and things that still need to be hammered out, the technical questions that councillor Groner was asking about, you know, can we even reuse these buildings or are they going to fall apart? So those are the kind of details to get hammered out then. And then once projects start to kind of bubble up as like, this is, you know, being planned, it's on its way to happening, negotiating with the property owners and developers, development agreements that include infrastructure funding strategies. So, you know, is the city going to use TIF dollars or other funds to support infrastructure on these sites? And then also outlining what is expected from those developments, what are the public goods that are coming out of them, what are the expectations that the city can say, okay, we're holding, we're going to give you this infrastructure dollars, but only if you're, you know, delivering what you say you're going to deliver in a timely manner, that kind of thing. And then the city can work on that horizontal infrastructure construction, the roads, utilities, trails, and the developers and property owners work on the structures and the vertical development. So as far as the city investing TIF dollars, the city should be opportunity-driven, and the capital investment should leverage those partnerships that I was just talking about. And again, implementing the vision plan projects, there is a lot of outreach, as Adrian discussed before, these are kind of, you know, once you adopt the vision plan, that will be a roadmap for the kinds of investments that you should be prioritizing. Additional projects, that Main Street-style street pattern, continuous lowland connectors road, and potential remediation and restoration of those holding ponds and wetlands that we've heard about so much today. We love an early win, so these are some kind of quicker, less expensive actions that you can take, you know, sooner rather than later to really start activating the waterfront and giving the community a sense of ownership, saying this is a place that we want you to be, that this is part of our community. So the first is programming that, some interim gathering space or a plaza on the site directly adjacent to City Hall. It's kind of right by the fishing dock, there's like a flat area with not a lot going on. The collaboration with property owners is going to be needed, but you could do some, you know, kind of quick improvements, like putting programming like a farmer's market or concerts, which I know it's almost winter, so maybe that's not the time for that, but planters, lighting, seeding, anything that really communicates to the public, this is your space. This is a space that we want you to be and get used to seeing the river, because you're going to see a lot more of it. And then another thing that you can do is improve that public fishing dock. We've heard from folks that it's kind of treacherous to get down there and hard to navigate. So improving that in a way that makes it more accessible is another way to bring people to the river. The next kind of stage of actions we're calling getting ready, these are the actions that are going to be necessary for major change. So we've already talked about these, but I'm just kind of going through them again. Continuing to engage Westland residents and other public stakeholders. This is not going to be the last time that there's an opportunity for public input. This is going to be, you know, a long, ongoing process, and making sure that everybody's on the same page is going to be essential. Entering into those memorandums of understanding with those key partners. Next slide. And then engaging partners in detailed master planning of the site. There's a big unknown with the future of the PGE property, so that partnership is going to be really important, working with PGE to understand what their needs are and their plans are and how that property can fit into the waterfront plan. And then identifying those opportunities to enter into development agreements with partners that are ready to, you know, break ground on something that aligns with the vision. And again, further studying coordination is going to be needed to determine, you know, some of those specifics, roadway and trail alignments, public space allocations, other investments that may be critical to this development. And so the city should lead on convening and coordinating stakeholders and identifying those areas where those details need to be further planned.
All right, home stretch. Just wanted to bring forward some of the, so I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we took the vision plan back out earlier in the year to the public through an online survey, just to get a gauge of how well we'd represented previous input. We had 221 responses on that survey, just for the numbers. On the next slide, these are just some statistics on what we heard out of that survey. So I think overall, the vision plan was well-supported. About two-thirds of residents said they either somewhat or strongly agreed with the vision plan accurately representing the community's vision. On the next slide, just through the districts, there was varying levels of support, as you've heard today. So about 70% somewhat agree or somewhat agree in the Historic City Hall District. In the Cultural Heritage District on the next slide was almost three-quarters of respondents indicated that way. And then lastly, in the Pond District, as you've sort of heard throughout this, is there's a slight drop-off in that response, and about two-thirds of respondents agreed with the vision plan in that district. So as we've talked about, what's in front of you is a couple of recommendations from the project working group and from Planning Commission. So we'd love to get opinion on those. So I think those are in front of you. They're also on this slide here. I won't go through all of them unless you'd like me to. And then on the next slide is a summary, this is also in the meeting packet, of, you know, Planning Commission recommendations. So to double down on Darren's request earlier, is, you know, what we're looking for today is guidance on language for the vision plan that we can bring back to the next work session to have a refined vision plan to bring forward to hearing in November. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you all for the detailed and good presentation today. Yes, stay on that slide. I want to check in with the city council on these, to have a brief discussion on these items. So maybe for the first one, just a show of thumbs or a consensus on using the 1996 flood elevation map to better correspond. I think that's supported by staff as well, using that. Is that correct?
That is correct. It more accurately represents the flood elevation as it's mapped.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. And then, so I see consensus there, so we can do that. And then on the, removing in the planning stages from the medium-density residential area in the Ponds District. So we heard from some of the testimony that, I can't really tell if the objection is to the yellow on the map or the language in the medium residential density in the planning stage, but I'm sure we'll hear clarification on that. But how do folks feel about what to do with that recommendation from the Planning Commission? Councillor Bright?
I think from my perspective, it's removing just that green box that says medium-density residential currently in the planning stage, you just take that box out. You've got the zoning already there, which is what the existing zoning is, but I think that would help clarify that we're not looking to any particular development.
Agreed. Couldn't have said it better. So is there a consensus of the council on that? I'm seeing some head nods and thumbs up. So we will take that box out, and I'll note that the way that the map reads with the color, as you noted earlier, the yellow applies to all the different areas where potential development could happen, and that is technically a space where potential development could happen. So we're not indicating any sort of preferential treatment for that site by having that color there and by removing the language. I think that makes sense from what we've heard from the active community on this topic. So we will, can make that change. And then what was the issue of the map legends?
There was, sorry, there is ecological corridors shown earlier in the plan. I'm not sure exactly what page it is, which are shown on some of the maps too, but the legend doesn't have the wording, so we could add that in there very, very easily.
Okay. I think there, I'm guessing there's a consensus on that? Okay. I see thumbs, so we have that. And then I want to make sure to touch on the heritage issue and maintaining industrial kind of, as encouraging as the maintenance of the structures there. And maybe, I heard comments from at least three councillors about the issue of making sure that we're not going too far in doing that to preclude potential development, seeing some, having some investigation done, as I'm sure the private sector will do, as they look at how to develop and determining what can stay and what can't stay. But perhaps staff could, before our next work session, come up with a couple draft statements to reflect the testimony that we heard from Ms. Carter and Mr. Edwards and others, just to make sure we're encouraging that preservation where possible. I think that makes sense. So at the next work session, we can review a couple of options and pick one. And also, we'll seek some, I'm sure we'll get some more feedback on language. And to the folks in the public, you're also welcome to suggest some language as well. We can tackle that issue at the next work session. Does that sound okay to everybody? Rather than trying to wordsmith something up here, we'll take a little time and get it right? Okay? See thumbs up? Okay, and head nods. So that kind of handles, I think, the main issues that need council attention right now, other than, oh, councillor Bright, please.
We have a couple of working group recommendations that we haven't really talked about very specifically, and one of them is including recommendations for affordable housing in the project area. And I don't know really how we can recommend that. The city doesn't really have funds to make sure that that happens. Some of the stuff that I saw with the League of Oregon Cities is many of these new developments are just doing market rate apartments and development, which does free up some other more affordable options. I would love to see affordable housing in the project area. I'm just not sure how we can kind of force that issue. The other thing they talked about is recommendations for smart growth development, which is a lot of the multimodal transportation, and I think that's kind of embedded in some of the things that are already in the plan, so maybe we don't need to do that. But I just thought it was important that this was something the working group brought up and that we should at least address it and see if there's a way that we could strengthen those comments in the plan or just say it's already embedded in the plan and doesn't need any additional language.
Was your second comment on the access to the area or the transport?
Well, they, it's the working group recommendation number two, smart growth development concepts. And so I think without using smart growth development, which is a very specific planning term, that we have many of those concepts in the plan, so maybe we don't need to specify it. I just thought it was worth commenting on.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, maybe perhaps for the affordable housing component, we take a similar approach to the preservation of industrial heritage, where we just, for this framework and vision, we put it in there where we say we're encouraging affordable housing, you know, and we're feasible, so that that way it's a policy statement of the city council, because I do agree. I think it's good to have where it makes sense. But obviously, since we don't own any of the land at this time, it's hard to state that or require it. But we can review some language on that, I think, at the next meeting. And I appreciated the focus on the implementation and the economics as well. It's going to be key, and I'm so glad we adopted the Urban Renewal District in the past. It might even be, I don't know if it makes sense after we get past adoption to kind of take another look at the urban renewal plan and make sure, because it was adopted before we went through this visiting process, so maybe we need to look at that plan again, just to make sure we're all aligned, the goals are aligned and things like that. But that's just a, it's a future consideration, but I appreciated the tangible steps there. Anything else from the city council? So the next time this will be on the agenda, I was looking at the tentative agenda, it's been talked about, I think it's the third meeting of this month, the third Tuesday, that's the 21st.
That's correct.
Of October. Okay. So very exciting, and I think 10 years of work going into this. When you look back, I actually think I attended one of those open houses at the police station back in like 2019. So nice to be able to be a part of this as well. I agree with councillor Bonnington, where, so, anything else on this topic?
I appreciate your feedback and thanks to Adrian and Jennifer for coming and giving the presentation. So I've got five things that we will, we will make three changes and then draft some language for the encouraging preservation of the historic structures, and then some language around affordable housing. And we'll make these other three changes to the map.
That's great. Sounds good. Well, thank you all for being here. Great presentation today. I feel like I have a really good, solid foundation going into the next phases here. And I want to thank our three wonderful members of the public for being here and providing their comments as well. And with that, I think we can transition on to the final item of this agenda. What a full, wonderful meeting today we've had. It's time for the city manager report. Right on time, by the way, five minutes early.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that as well. And thank you to the team and the members of our community, as the mayor said, for being part of this. being part of this process. I thought that was a great level of, I know that was a lot, but I thought that was a really important level of information for council to get. I think well-timed, considering your process. So we'll see all of you on the 21st again or? Okay. All right. Excellent. Good. We will see you then. Thank you. It's four o'clock, so I will keep this relatively short, but I do have a couple of things. First of all, as always, upcoming meetings. You won't have another meeting until 8:30 tomorrow morning. So thank you for your commitment to West Lynn this week. Tomorrow morning, council will be meeting to talk about city long-term, medium-term, maybe even immediate-term financial needs. This is the meeting that we have talked about many times, coming out of the city budget adoption process. What is it that the council would like to focus on in the future? How might we stabilize our funds? And how might we deliver projects and programs that the community is looking for? The consultant and I, I think, have one more little prep email to send out to you tonight with a couple of pieces of information to get you thinking. So please look out for that. But that meeting, we will be here at eight, Teresa, is that true? The meeting's at 8:30. I know the meeting's at 8:30, but I think you can arrive a little early if you want to get some coffee and get ready. And scheduled to go to 11:30, I believe, to noon, to noon. Yep. And so we are very much looking forward to that conversation. We will have department heads here to help and participate in the conversation. But our great facilitator, Sarah and Sasha, will both be here to facilitate your discussion. So thank you for, in advance, for your time on that. After that, then the next meeting won't be till October 14th, next Tuesday. Just remember, our business meetings now on Tuesday nights. That's actually a fairly light agenda planned next Tuesday, not a lot of adoption items scheduled. But Darren will be back here with code amendments that you have discussed before. And following that, October 21st will be our evening work session, more planning, vision 43, the waterfront vision plan, and potentially the lease agreement with the state of Oregon for Mary S. Young, which is a topic that Megan and Kaylee and I, particularly Megan and Kaylee, have spent quite a bit of time on, really interesting and complicated topic. And so I think there's a lot of people in our community not even sure that the city of West Lynn doesn't own that property and that we operated under a lease. With changing times, there's a lot of changing things to think about. And so we will also have a council rules discussion for you because a council rule change is needed to get that Tuesday meeting enshrined in the rules. So that is upcoming. And a couple of other things. You know, I love to talk about the art in the class. This one is a really cool one. This is art from the high school's AP art program. We have 18 specially-commissioned artworks for this space. Diane Gaultier, who's the art teacher at West Lynn High School, came in, looked at our space and decided on a size of canvas and created an assignment for the students. So these are all going to be part of students' portfolios for their AP art test, which I think is really cool. The students built the frames, they stretched the canvas, they prepped the canvas, and then created the art. And the theme of the, all the art, all the year long, I think, is that it's a, it's focusing on the student voice. So what speaks to the students? They're assembling a package of art that they can present to the panel to get their AP score. And so you see a lot of different looks here. And we have 18 artists. Their names are on the wall. And they're going to come in one day to see their art hung in City Hall. So that's pretty cool. We'll try to, we'll try to welcome them there. So I really appreciate that. And I love, this is our first art commissioned for this space. So a new high for us in our art program. We have, and we'll be including this in the weekly email, but I just wanted to draw your attention to the results of that Oppenlander survey that was released and sent to council. We'll be releasing those results to public. Getting over 1,000 responses, I think, was really cool. There's obviously a lot of community interest in this topic. And I think people took the assignment seriously. We learned a number of interesting things. I think the, some of the biggest takeaways to me is how high the Grove of Trees scored in community preference for this site. Preserving the Grove of Trees was highly favored, but many elements were well-favored by the community members. Almost half of the people who responded would walk to the site. So I think the interest, the clicks were from people who had a particular interest in the site. That may reflect that they lived quite close to the site. There's a, there's an analysis, there's a question that asks about how far away do you live that you want to take a look at? But 95 people, 95% of people reported they were residents of the city of West Lynn. And one thing that I thought was particularly interesting is of the folks that responded, 60% said they supported the city moving forward, even if there'd be a cost to taxpayers from a bond or a levy. And so that's a fairly high number. There's no specifics included in the survey question, of course. There's no actual economics in there. But that's an interesting first data point. A real range of ages responded. And this chart appealed to me. This is the number of people with age 18 or younger in their household, evenly split, right down the middle. So I think we got an interesting cross-section of the community, providing you with some info on that, that maybe could be taken into account tomorrow morning. Hope you're enjoying the new chairs. We buy them every 25 years, whether we need them or not. So I'm excited to have a chair that actually provides me some lumbar support over here. And they are, if you have any troubles adjusting, Teresa can be the expert. But I'm really pleased that we can, once in a while, do something nice to repay all the effort that you put into this job. Some mention of TVFNR on council. We, as department head team, had lunch over at Station 55 the other day on Hidden Springs. And they hosted us. We had a great communicate, we had a great conversation about mutual projects, things of interest to our community. And those who had not yet ridden the ladder truck got to ride in the ladder truck on a fly-around-the-block. So that was popular, for sure. They didn't get turnouts and all of it, but maybe in the future. I think that is most of what I wanted to cover. Don't forget about all the great events. The library, I noticed kindergarten carnival is this week, very heavily attended on primary conference days at the beginning of the year. And I know the library's overrun with kindergartners. That may make you want to run down there and join or may make you want to stay away for a couple of days, depending on your tastes. But I appreciate all that the library does. Next week, we'll talk about some of our fall events in parks and look forward to seeing you right here tomorrow morning. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anything else for the good of the order? You know, under previous councils, that was, that elicited a lot of discussion, but under this council, everybody is on the good terms. Well, we're adjourned and we'll see you at 8:30 in the morning, bright and early. Coffee provided, I hear.